Good evening colleagues.
I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. First item of business is apologies.
Lord Mayor, we've received apologies from councillors Ahad, Alabay, Bird, Burke, Davis, Forbes, Hillix, Hindmarsh, Kemp, McGinnis, Brahman, Karen Robinson, Shepherd, Jackie Schlesinger and White.
The minutes, the records will be amended to show that councillor Lower submitted apologies for the last meeting. Does council agree with the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 2nd of March 2016? Angela.
The minute's recorded that we've had to bear with the issue councillor Stockdale ignoring my question about the automated telephone system that's causing so many problems for the residents of Parklands Ward. Perhaps that could be recorded? Thank you.
Thank you. No, the problem is the fact it wasn't recorded rather than your lack of response. Thank you.
On page eight of the report last year, we, at the minutes, at the last meeting, we agreed that Cabinet and the leader of the council would progress the devolution agreement and the creation of the mayoral combined authority. So we vested that power in the leader and the cabinet. So given what's happened since we last met, it's not unreasonable for council to expect a statement from maybe the deputy leader this evening or the leader at some other point to explain what has happened since and what the current situation is, otherwise we just read in the press. So there has to be some force to the motions that we pass in council, there has to be some action arising from the decisions that we make. So is that possible that we can have a statement tonight at some point, Lord Mayor?
I feel that it might be a bit of an imposition to be jumped on at this moment in time. Could I have a response, councillor McCarthy?
Lord Mayor, the leader of council has taken forward quite strongly the views of city council and was very forceful in the discussion with other members of the combined authority. Colleagues will know the decision that at least one authority has taken and that other authorities are concerned about the timescales. But I'd like to report to council that we are making progress on our deal with the government for devolution and a final decision will be made in May. And until then, we are negotiating, we've got officers meeting with government officials, I think even this week, we've got those conversations are happening. So we're very hopeful that we will end up with some devolution deal over that period of time, those conversations are happening. Lord Mayor, I don't know whether we want to suggest that we bring a report back or maybe that leader of council circulates some information after the meeting in May to all members and then we can just make sure that everybody knows the most up-to-date position so that all members are aware of where we are in relation to the discussions.
I'm sure we appreciate it. Thanks very much councillor McCarthy. Are there anything, any other items arising from the apologies? Sorry, from the minutes. Official announcements, we have been notified of the death of former lady mayoress Marjorie Brown. She was the wife of the late councillor Bob Brown who was Lord Mayor in 1994. The funeral is Friday the 15th of April at 12 noon at the West Road Crematorium. On behalf of the city council, may I offer condolences to her family and ask that we stand for a minute's silence. Notice of motion from councillor Stockdale. A copy of the emergency notice of motion has been circulated in the chamber as part of the items circulated at the meeting pack. It is suggested that this matter should be dealt with as a matter of urgency because of the current circumstances of the steel industry in the UK. If this notice of motion is to be dealt with tonight, it will be necessary to suggest suspending standing order 14 which relates to the time period for bringing a notice of motion. Is this agreed? Thank you. We will deal with that notice of motion immediately after item 13 appointments. As this is the last council meeting before the election, I would like to take this opportunity to address the members who will be standing down at the local election next month, retiring or otherwise, and to thank you for your public service and hard work on behalf of the residents of Newcastle. Thank you. Correspondence. We have received one letter from the mayor of Paris. It has been circulated with the agenda pack for information. Does council agree to receive the correspondence? Item five, petitions.
As Paris was recovering from terrorist outrages, Brussels was hit. I was at the committee of the regions working group there on Monday and was struck by the resilience of local people telling me how they'd taken advantage of lockdowns to reclaim the streets and go out at night, their sense of humour but also their puzzlement that those they'd sheltered should turn on them. Can I suggest that you, Lord Mayor, or either the council, send them a letter of solidarity too, as they're displaying from buildings, jet en buxelle?
Thank you for your suggestion. I call on councillor Higgins to present a petition regarding parking at Tyndale House.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to present this petition on behalf of the elderly residents of Tyndale House in my ward, which is located on a particularly hazardous and speedy stretch of the road, and their petition is as follows. We, the undersigned residents of Tyndale House, wish to express concerns about unlawful parking on the footpath outside our premises. This has caused damage to the flagstones and in view of the age of many residents, this represents a constant hazard for those with mobility problems. The parked vehicles also partly obscure the highway and hence it is difficult to see the approach of buses when waiting at the nearby bus stop. In the past, bollards have been installed which have failed to completely resolve the problem and clearly further work needs to be carried out. We therefore call upon the council to complete a further inspection of the area and in consultation with residents, agree proposals to effectively address this problem and ensure the safety of the elderly residents.
Thank you. I call on councillor McCarthy on behalf of councillor Kemp to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to councillor Higgins for raising those issues and indeed to the residents who've been raising these matters with Rob and his colleagues for some time and of course the council is trying to respond to that. My understanding is that this has been raised over the last few months with officers and there is a plan to look at a scheme that provides waiting restrictions in the area which would be included in the programme for this financial year. In the meantime, any vehicles that are parked obstructing pedestrians from safely using the footpaths or waiting for buses will be encouraged to report to the police using the 101 telephone number and the police will enforce the willful obstruction of the highway in that vicinity. So I do hope, Lord Mayor, that that resolves the problem for these residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Does council agree to receive the petition? Thank you. I now call on councillor Cot to present a petition regarding the Gosforth Library.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I have a petition which is signed by around 300 people, both online and hard copy. It's about stopping the cuts to opening hours and it says, we, the undersigned, request Newcastle City Council reconsider the proposal to reduce opening hours of Gosforth Library from 60 hours to 23 hours per week with complete closure on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Sundays and staff job losses, which would reduce access to books and other information by those most unable to obtain it privately, deprive the community of capacity for meetings and underutilise a facility in which the city council has only recently made a substantial capital investment. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. A call on councillor Stockdale, cabinet member, to respond.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thanks very much councillor Cot for presenting the petition this evening and thanks to all the residents who signed it. Look, I think everybody in this chamber knows that libraries are not just important, they're absolutely vital, but I think equally everybody in this chamber is aware that the present Conservative government and the previous Conservative Liberal Democrat coalition government, over the last six years, have decimated the budget of this city and that's left us with some impossible budget decisions of which reducing library opening hours was one. As a direct consequence of those government cuts, the savings that have been required to be made from the customer culture and skills division within the council are huge, very huge, very significant, around about a million pounds. So we, as a Labour administration, have had to make some really difficult choices. A difficult choice, but we made a choice that we were going to save every single one of our libraries in the city from closure and the way we've been able to do that is reducing opening hours. And I know it's a choice that councillor Cot and my colleagues on the opposition side of the chamber support because that was actually a proposal that you put in previous budget year around libraries and the idea of reducing library opening hours. So we've made a choice not to close libraries, that's resulted in us having to reduce the opening hours of our libraries, but at least that choice gives us some hope that in the future we'll have a government that is fairer in allocating local government finances and if we haven't closed libraries, it means we can extend library opening hours. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Does council agree to receive the petition? I now call on councillor Allen to present two petitions regarding the Great North Road. We will listen to both of these petitions as the responder is the same cabinet member. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As you say, both of these petitions are sort of linked because they all both relate to the cycle lanes that are being put in through Gosforth. The first one relates to the closure of the service road on the Great North Road and it says, Newcastle City Council is intending to create a cycle lane along the whole length of the service road north of the Polworth Drive roundabout. To do so, they plan to close the entrance to the service road from the roundabout and making the residents of the North Road share the road with cyclists and access their properties via Polworth Road. In spite of objections being raised at various meetings, they have driven ahead with their plans and have tried to restrict access to their intentions. We are therefore requesting signatures for a petition to ask the planning authority to reconsider the planned closure of the service road. This petition to stop the closure of the service road was signed by 126 people. The second petition, which I have to say is not signed by the same people, is a call to review details of the Great North Road cycleway extension. As part of the plans for a Great North cycleway from Darlington to Blythe, route CR4 is being built up the Great North Road in Newcastle upon Tyne. The latest stretch will run from Broadway roundabout to Brunton Lane, north Gosforth. This will include changes at Greystoke Park, the Polworth Drive roundabout and the closure to vehicles of the service road to the west of the Great North Road. Residents believe the plans as currently formulated will endanger cyclists and that there are better alternatives which have not been fully explored and so are calling upon Newcastle City Council to suspend implementation while the plans are reconsidered. Local residents are more fully and effectively consulted, the lessons learned from the new cycleways from Regent Centre to Broadway are evaluated and the proposals are integrated into those for rotaryway sandy lane scheme north of Newcastle Racecourse. And this one is signed by 152 people. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Your second petition? I had both them together. Great stuff. Could I call upon the cabinet member councillor Jed Bell to respond? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for agreeing to allow me to collectively respond to these. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Allen for bringing the petition and also the residents for attending council tonight. It's always great to see people participating in the democratic procedure that we have. First, I'd like to note that as part of our standard consultation process, we will listen to the views of every respondent to this consultation, including the signatories of these petitions. In the terms of our consultation, it is not yet finished, so no final decision has been made about what we would like to seek to implement. The current consultation closes on Friday, so these petitions and all of the other representations made on this matter will be reviewed once it has closed. Once that has happened, the council will take a balanced decision about the most appropriate scheme to take forward. As part of this, we will consider all the views expressed and our responsibilities as the highway authority. I note that the council has requested a meeting with the officers about this scheme and I've instructed the head of transport and the head of highways to organise this, which we are currently doing. I have asked them to do so at a time that they will be enabled to have the full results of the consultation so they can all be considered collectively. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Does council agree to receive the petition? Item number six, public question time. We have received a request to address council from Mark Loftus, parish councillor, regarding the traffic measures in the Great North Road. I call on Mark Loftus to address the council.
Ninety-nine percent of residents in 90 houses on the Great North Road, Polworth Road, Polworth Drive and Norwood Avenue strongly, even vehemently objected the closure of the access road and related traffic measures. These 99% of residents would be directly affected by the proposed closure of the road, the introduction of cycle lanes, yellow lines, moving traffic lights, introduction of new crossings and road humps between the Polworth Drive roundabout and Brunton Lane. Ninety-nine percent signed a petition that councillor Allen presented to you earlier. We have a number of residents here in the gallery to represent anguish felt by the residents. As a parish councillor who lives and works in the affected area, I am in a very strong position to listen to the views expressed by residents of Brunton, Melton and the Great Park and I can assure the council that there is a groundswell of opinion against the proposed traffic measures and declare that I represent a consensus view. The main concern is safety and welfare of families living on the above-mentioned road. At a street surgery on Friday the 15th of March, our three ward councillors met with anxious residents who expressed the following concerns and offered the following comments. Councillor Allen extended an invitation for an engineer to come along and answer questions. No engineer was available, so the questions were not answered. The major concerns, I repeat, the main concern is the safety and welfare of the homeowners who are council taxpayers and live on the Great North Road, Polworth Road, Polworth Drive, Norwood Avenue and others. Cutting off the access road leaves one entrance and exit to Brunton Park for all vehicles, including emergency services. There are 982 properties on this estate. If a large vehicle such as a delivery lorry or a maintenance van is either short or long-term parked on the outside of the access road, how does the two-way traffic work for residents? How do visitors to properties or indeed owners fare if double yellow lines restrict parking of another vehicle belonging to the family? Double yellow lines would shunt together the existing parking of residents' cars to create an even worse situation for service vehicles and visitors to properties. Doctors, district nurses, care workers, food delivery vehicles would potentially have nowhere in the vicinity to park and deliver services or essential items. Two-way traffic on a currently one-way section is a potential danger. Increased usage on Polworth Road which has cars parked on both sides is a potential danger, particularly for families with children. Closure of the access road would create another unsafe situation on Westwood Road. Residents have not yet been canvassed. How would refuse lorries, cars with trailers or caravans turn around if the access road is blocked? Where and who made the suggestion to change the proposal? To our knowledge, no cyclist's been injured on the access road. There are 982 properties on Brunton Park, 520 on Melton and well over 1,000 on the Great Park. All of these people would be affected by the intended changes. We can confirm that November 2015 councillor David Down proposed that the cycle lanes be positioned on the east side of the dual carriageway where a footpath in a sizable grassed area with no residential properties on the full length of the stretch. This suggestion is supported by a number of residents as a safer route for cyclists and families. To date, there has been no response to his email. I should like to quote a statement from a resident on the Great North Road whose name and address is available to the council if requested. Why am I needed as a resident put below that of a cyclist? Please let us see common sense and keep the road open. May I add, on Monday morning, I cycled from Brunton Park to the civic centre to hand in the petition. My sighting journey was unpleasant. Approaching Gosforth High Street with a double-decker bus behind me, I was faced with a blocked drain full of water. This produced a large poto to reveal bare electrical cables. I could have potentially been electrocuted. Please do not waste money on closing roads, just maintain them. Thank you.
Lord Mayor? Thank you. Can I call on cabinet member Jed Bell, councillor Jed Bell, to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And again, on this occasion, I'd like to thank Mr Loftus for presenting this tonight and again, the residents for attending because this is actually participating within our democracy and transparency in the decision-making and with this in mind, it is actually generally good to see you all here. I said earlier, in response to the petitions, that I would try not to repeat myself, but I will reiterate a few key points within the message that I did say to councillor Allen. One, the consultation for these proposals has not yet finished, so no final decision has been made. Two, as with any consultation, we will listen to the views of every person who makes them known. Three, at the end of the consultation, and bearing in mind all views we have received, we will take a balanced decision about how the most appropriate scheme can be taken forward. Though, one other thing that is important to note is that at this point, if you don't agree with the proposal, you do actually have a further opportunity in the consultation process to make that known and object. We have not reached that point yet though. Mr Loftus, I've only got three minutes to respond and it was quite a detailed passage that you put forward, so I can't actually respond in detail to each of them, but I will make sure that I put it down in writing and cover each and every point in detail. I will also suggest, the meeting that I did mention before with councillor Allen and her colleagues, with senior officers, that possibly you might be able to attend that meeting and you'll be able to hear first hand about what is actually happening and what stage we're at. One thing I'd like to respond to directly though, is that the principal point that you make is that the residents are concerned about their safety and welfare and those of other people. And I'm sure that I can say this for everybody in this council, that that's something that we all care about as well, just as dearly as yourself. So I thank you for your time and your efforts tonight and I thank you for putting that question to council.
Thank you councillor Bell. Mr Loftus, you have a minute to respond if you wish to reply you have received.
No, I think I've said enough, thank you.
Thanks very much, thanks for your time. I now call on Danny Cowan-Turner to ask the three questions submitted regarding the old Odeon building.
I represent a new community group centred around protecting the old Odeon cinema on East Pilgrim Street and restoring it to its old former glory and giving it to community groups for their use. I have three questions. With specific reference to the core strategy and urban core plan adopted by the council in 2015, there are details in the Newcastle central sub area, section 16.5, regarding a major expansion at East Pilgrim Street with a primary focus on retail, commercial and leisure. Please, could the council advise on the current state of these plans, including any timeframes for proposals to be presented and the general redevelopment programme? My second question, the old Odeon building on Pilgrim The old Odeon Building on Pilgrim Street is viewed by many as an important part of the heritage of the city. In addition to this, there are large numbers of community groups, artists, social enterprises, church groups and support groups, mental health etc. occupying the surrounding buildings in the area. Could the council advise on how they intend to accommodate the current residents of this area following the redevelopment? And will the council support saving this cultural asset as a community of creativity and culture, as part of a vibrant, varied and fascinating city of Newcastle? My third question. Are the council currently in discussions with the owners of this building, and could they clarify their current intentions to the future use of this building? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Could I call upon councillor Stone to respond? Sorry. Councillor Bell to respond, thank you. In time, in time, I'm sure.
Wishful thinking, Lord Mayor.
Not on my behalf, is it?
Thank you, Mr Cowan-Turner. I'll answer them as quickly as possible. So question one, the core strategy in the urban core plan sets out the council's planning policy towards these sites. However, and I'm sure you're aware of this, the land ownership of most of the sites in the area are in private hands, and it is therefore the site owners, or the developers, acting for the site owners that would bring forward redevelopment proposals on the site. There are a number of ongoing discussions with the landowners in the area, but none of these have yet led to a plan application from an owner or developer on the main land holdings on Pilgrim Street itself. Going straight on to your question two about the Odeon Building. The core strategy, in reply to question one, in the urban core plan, sets out the council's position on these sites. And as stated in the response to question one, it's the private landowners that would bring forward the redevelopment and deal with any tenancy issues that may have in place in them buildings. Question three, again, as stated in reply to question one, the council are in dialogue with the owners of the northern block of Pilgrim Street. At this moment in time, the council are not aware that the owners have any firm plans for the Odeon Building itself. I hope that's covered the points in as much detail as you need, but if you do need further details, please just drop us a line.
Thank you, councillor. You have one minute, if you wish to respond to the reply?
I just kind of made a kind of speech. All right, so in this time of economic strife, I think we should endeavour to protect all assets of the city, especially cultural assets, that have a tendency to be neglected. Newcastle City stands apart from other UK cities due to its sizeable collection of cultural assets, cultural assets that bring the community together. Newcastle has little to gain from losing one of these assets, so I think Newcastle City Council and our group and many other community groups should work together to protect this building and to make sure the East Pilgrim Street area is, in the future, a vibrant and interesting part of the city that draws people in, not only from this area but even nationally. I have a good example from the Odeon Cinema itself. My mum, who doesn't live anywhere near here, she saw Star Wars when she was young in the Odeon Cinema. There's countless people, even in this room, who will have been to the Odeon Cinema. It is a cultural asset.
Mr Cowan-Turner, could you wind up, please?
I thank you for your time, and thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks for the question. I wish everybody would respond as quickly as that. Item number seven, presentation by the Director of Public Health, Professor Eugene Milne, Director of Public Health, will present his annual report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here to present my second annual report as Director of Public Health for Newcastle, and it continues to be a privilege to serve in that role in the city that's been my home now for nearly thirty-seven years. It's also a pleasure to be able to present an annual report on the same night as the first portfolio holders' report for public health and housing, and I think that the signal that's sent by the positioning of public health in that way within the council is extremely positive and reflects what I've found to be the reception of public health within the council since my time here. Throughout the report, I hope you've had time to read, there are references to the recommendations that were made in last year's report. I don't propose to go through those in detail. I would point out that, as I've said in the report, that those recommendations, in many cases, are setting a direction of travel that I would expect us to follow over a period of years. I wouldn't have expected them to be fulfilled within one year, though some have been. Those aspirations, I think, are feeding through into activities that have taken place during the year and continue to inform our actions within public health in the city. I also reflected last time on the role of Director of Public Health annual reports, what they're for, the way that in the past they fulfilled a role of, if you like, being a document of record. There are far more outlets for statistics now than there were in the past, and a lot of the public health activity and progress that we see is recorded within the Public Health Outcomes framework. If you're not familiar with it, it is available on the internet and is extremely interesting if you want to go and look at comparisons between Newcastle and the rest of the country. I would recommend that to you. I have drawn out a number of indicators from the outcomes framework that I think are of particular importance, however. There are a variety of good things going on in the city. As I've identified, we have seen the lowest level of smoking prevalence on record in the last year in Newcastle. It dropped below twenty per cent. That is an extraordinary achievement and reflects a downward trend in smoking that we've seen in the north-east generally over the last ten years, that I think has been exemplary and is recognised nationally and internationally as an exemplary record. We're now also seeing a fall in smoking in pregnancy, which is of profound importance, not only now and for the near future, but for the health of those individuals in future decades. The impact of changes in smoking in pregnancy now will be reflected in levels of heart disease in six or seven decades' time. We're seeing, again, very good performance in screening and immunisation coverage here, and that tends to reflect the pattern that we generally see of good services in the city against a background of severe disadvantage and difficulty with health. We've seen improvements at school, we've seen a fall in excess weight among four-to-five-year-olds that, okay, it's not been going for very many years, but I'm very encouraged that it seems to be beginning to turn against what's been previously an apparently unstoppable tide. It would be remiss of me not to make the point that the health and care services within the city continue to be, in most cases, excellent and recognised for their excellence nationally and internationally. But there are some big problems. I think, in common with the rest of the country, we saw during 2014 to 15 a markedly higher rate of excess winter deaths. It was a very substantial rise. The rates of deaths, which I've illustrated in the report, have extended beyond that period, and it's a question of considerable debate at the moment nationally as to what is driving that, what has driven that over that period of time. There are certain, very obvious candidates. One of them is the fact that during the winter of 2014-15, we know that there was a mismatch between the influenza immunisation that was made available and the strains of influenza that circulated in the community. I have to say, however, the excess of deaths that we saw was surprising even in the light of that. We wouldn't have expected it to have been as big an effect as we've seen. Some of my colleagues, particularly in the north-west, have argued very plausibly and clearly that it's an impact of austerity. I think that's still disputed. Public Health England have put a considerable amount of analytical time and effort into looking at this to see whether that can be clarified. I think at this stage, it's still open to question, but we have seen publications of studies that show a clear relationship between changes in income and changes in risk that I think we need to be very much aware of. In some respects, the thing that bothers me more in those figures that I've illustrated in the report at the moment is the change in healthy life expectancy, which we've seen fall, particularly in men. It's probably worth just explaining that when we talk about life expectancy and healthy life expectancy, although these sound as if they're measures of where people are now compared with the experience they've had during their lifetime, they're actually contemporary measures. They're measures of what would happen if a child were born today and experienced the levels of risk at every stage in their life that exist today. So the measures that are described here, when we see a rapid change in a thing like healthy life expectancy, are driven not by, if you like, a sort of longitudinal change in the risk for those individuals, but is the combination of changes in risks that have happened across all ages within the community. It's troubling, and I think we need to be very aware of it. I don't think we're at a stage where we can draw a clear conclusion, but I think we need to be mindful of this in future, and I hope next year to be able to come back and tell you that that has ceased or reversed. In the light of that, I think that the direction of travel that we've taken around services over the last two to three years in Newcastle, in trying to realign those services that we commission and deliver much more closely with the most acute needs in the city, is advised and has continued to, I think, work well. We've begun to see changes in areas of delivery to poorer communities that I think are the right direction of travel, and I don't think there'd be any argument with that through this chamber. Financially, we obviously had a very difficult year. You'll be aware that we started the last financial year with a public health budget of twenty-one point three million, and in year one point five million of that was removed by the Chancellor. That one point five million reduction has been made recurrent, and we then have reductions in the public health budget over the next four years that will continue to drive it down. That has clearly been a difficult thing for us to deal with. I think we've managed to cushion the initial impact. I think it will impact, however, over time, and we're going to see that over the next few years in the changes that we'll necessarily have to make to the funding of services. However, my experience over the last two years in the council is that the quality of commissioning for services here is, to my mind, markedly superior to that that I experienced in the NHS. I think that we've seen changes in services through good commissioning that have managed to take down overheads and other expenses whilst preserving services to a remarkable extent, and I hope that we will be able to continue doing that over the next few years as we work through those budget changes. In the report, one of the things that I've highlighted, and which I hope we will be able to come back to later in the year in more detail, is the issue of creating healthy places. You'll recall that last year I talked about what public health is for in a council, whether it's about treating individuals or about treating populations. And what I'd like to draw your attention to is the fact that with a plethora of strategies, many of which are very strong, I'm thinking here, Wellbeing for Life, the core strategy in urban core plan, the currently in development Sustainability and Transformation Plans in the NHS, the process that's going on with the Health and Social Care Commission and others, that those are part of shaping places to try and improve the health of populations, and I think there would be value in our trying to identify within that much more clearly the ways in which we are trying to assist in changes in population health. And I want to give you an illustration of that briefly. One of them that we could have talked about, I suppose, is the sort of planning changes that we're working through in relation to takeaway food outlets. But just a few days ago in the Lancet, I picked up a paper called Urban Environments in Fourteen Cities Worldwide That Are Related to Physical Activity. And what that study shows, and I think is terribly interesting, is that four characteristics that they looked at, net residential density, intersection density, public transport density and the number of parks, have what they describe as significant positive and linearly related influences on physical activity, relationships with physical activity in those cities. The difference in physical activity between participants living in the most and least activity-friendly neighbourhoods ranged from sixty-eight to eighty-nine minutes a week, which represented around about fifty per cent of the recommended guideline of activity. My point really is that the things that we're trying to do through those plans collectively should be interpreted as the mechanisms by which we assist our population to be able to incorporate healthier behaviours into their activities of daily living. I think this is the thing that councils can uniquely do, that contrasts with, for example, the individual behaviour change exhortation that we see through some of the national campaigns. I think this is the real strength of what might be done, and I think that's where I would like us to try and develop a healthy city plan that identifies what those targets might be. Finally, I just wanted to, before taking questions, I see I've got a red light, I wanted to point out that the post of DPH is a slightly odd one, being technically a joint appointment between the council and the Secretary of State, though the council has the privilege of paying the salary. The Director of Public Health report is a manifestation of that slight detachment that is there, as is also the requirement for the Director of Public Health to be able to give assurance to the Chief Executive of Public Health England that the public health grant has been used in accordance with national requirements. I wanted to make the point that I've been happy to make that assurance in both of the last two years. I believe that the public health grant is being used entirely in accordance with the requirements of the national guidance. And with that, I'd like to thank you for receiving the report. I'll be happy to take questions for as long as the Lord Mayor wishes.
Thank you, Professor. We now have fifteen minutes for questions, and could I emphasise that it is questions and not statements? Thank you. Could I call on councillor Taylor, please?
Thanks, Eugene, for a very interesting and informative report. Firstly, I just wanted to ask about the good news, really. I mean, it really is very good news at the bottom of page twenty on things like infant mortality and child poverty. I was really wondering why the council hadn't really made more of this very important statistic on child poverty, because it really is something we've been working on for so long, and to see the improvement is very encouraging. The second comment was on what you said really about healthy life expectancy, and all the other life expectancy figures, I think, probably aren't statistically significant, but that one is very obvious. And I just wondered whether you think it's likely to be just a statistical anomaly, or whether that's been seen across the country in other big cities, and whether that's something we really need to be concerned about, and what the reasons could be for it just being men rather than women. On page twenty-one, there was something I saw that I didn't realise at the bottom, where you say that the rich in Newcastle are similar in health to the rich in other cities, that the poor are poorer and less healthy. Again, that wasn't something I was aware of compared to other big cities, so I wondered if you could say a bit more about that. On page thirty, you talk about the number of drug-related deaths being unchanged but quite high, and I wondered if the figure actually was. Just a couple of others. Page thirty-one, why do you think we're struggling with survival screening? And on page thirty-three, why do you think we've got a higher rate of hip fractures than other parts of the country? Sorry, rather than...
Do you wish to take the questions individually or answer at the end of the question?
There, so I'll try and do a few of this. Why have we not made more of these things? I think, actually, we're not very good at blowing our trumpets over things done well in Newcastle. There are lots of things that are done extremely well, and we tend to sort of take those for granted, rather than making a big deal of them. I don't have a better explanation than that, but I think that there is, as I said in the presentation, a lot of excellent practice, and I think we perhaps should celebrate it more than we do. Is the healthy life expectancy change real or an artefact? That's an important question. I think the fact that we've seen the change in deaths more broadly, that there's great concern about it across the north-west, I think that those changes may well be real. I think the change in healthy life expectancy and the difference between men and women is very interesting. I think that that's probably principally been driven by self-perceived health and wellbeing, which is the way that healthy life expectancy is calculated, how the numerators are calculated. The men versus women is certainly plausible in the context of different types of employment, and we've seen changes of that kind, that sort of differential happen elsewhere with changing economic conditions. It certainly happened in East Germany, that there was a differential change with men and women after the fall of the Berlin Wall. The rich versus poor. Interestingly, actually, I did illustrate this in last year's annual report, that when you look at the deciles, the top decile of life expectancy in Newcastle is extremely similar to richer areas of the country. There's not much in it at all. It's the other end that it's different. My powerful suspicion... My powerful suspicion, although I haven't broken it down that way for other cities, is that that's the same relationship elsewhere, because what, what that's really illustrating is that the absolute level of deprivation matters quite a lot more in truth than the, than the relative level within, within an area. The drug-related deaths, I don't have the, the number with me at the moment. I, I think I know what it is, but I think I'd be better coming back to you afterwards to make sure that it's correct, rather than quoting you an incorrect one here. And cervical screening. Cervical screening, I think, has kind of slipped slightly off the agenda with those who deliver it, because cervical cancer figures tend, are actually not bad locally, they're, they're one of our, one of our better statistics in that respect. Our immunisation rates have been good, but those were, the rates of cervical cancer screening dropped to about seventy. We raised it with the Quality Commission, Quality Committee at the CCG, and hope to get a bigger focus on that to push those numbers back up to, to what they should be. I, was, did I answer the last question? Sorry, hip fractures. The, why are hip fractures higher? Okay, that's, I don't know the proper answer to that. I'd like to know the proper answer to it, and it's the reason why we're still trying to get in place a better infrastructure for avoiding falls. I think that actually that, that it, it, it's a combination of a variety of things, part of which is social isolation and, and risk factors within the home that could be addressed relatively simply. And if I had a better answer than that, I would give it to you. I do think it's an area we need to focus on, because I think potentially it's an area both where we could, we could get a significant gain in benefit for local people, and also reduce costs in the NHS fairly substantially.
Councillor Todd?
Thanks very much for a really fascinating, informative report. It's terrific reading. Likely, I was interested in the references on page twenty-four to creating healthy places. I'm wondering if really within that, if I might take a look at what happens within the physical environment, where we have particularly high concentrations of private landlords. In some parts of the city, it may true in all parts where you have a big concentration of private landlords, but where we do have them in some areas, we've got Alstair Hill, North Benwell, parts of Elton, Byngar, those areas. The practices driven by that, that form of housing tenure creates neighbourhood instability to quite a large degree. If you don't have a commitment to the area, they know they're going to be moved on, and property management is pretty poor. A particular question within that is whether in what you're looking at, we're trying to tackle with perhaps enforcement and other agencies and local community groups, the problems of litter, lighting, and refuse in those areas. Because that must be bad, where I live, it really is bad. It's not as bad as one or two other places, but it strikes me, must be two things at least in that. One is the, the risk of infection, and that comes with firm intractable other refuse and rubbish. But the other is the impact on people's mental health. And it really is depressing, I think, to, when you walk out of your, where you live, you walk into a litter-sprinkled street every day, and taking that, the thing is, is a real challenge for us, but there might be also a health, public health intervention dimension to that. Could that help?
Yeah, I'd say I completely agree with you, I think, and you recall that at the opening of the bike garden in Wingrove, I had quite a long conversation with one of your residents about the impact of litter. And we, I previously had a psychology post-doctoral student who worked with us in the department, looking at the relationships between, between litter and health and, and urban environment in exactly the sort of way that you're describing. We would be looking to try and do that, because I think those are key factors. The other way that I would play that into what we're trying to do is in developing a local indicator for the health premium, which is cited as one of the recommendations from last year, that I would see those measures as being part of what we'd want to try and build into that health premium indicator as a measure of, of the local wellbeing of an area. So, the short answer is yes, I think those are, those are very important factors. That is exactly the kind of thing that we should be incorporating.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord. Three quick how questions. Last year I asked you what was the status of your recommendations, and I'm not sure that you kind of knew, but, but seeing as this year you've followed them through and you're not producing new ones, can I ask how you track those recommendations through, how you work within the council? The second thing is another repeat question, which is how you think councillors could be better supported as health advocates within their communities? I've asked that one before. And the third one, you mentioned just now the health premium indicator. I wondered why or how the decision to pick smoking had been made, given that we've already made such good progress. Is it because, because we've made good progress, we'll get more of an incentive payment? I would have thought that given the good progress, that perhaps choosing alcohol for the health premium indicator was more sensible.
Okay. Your first question, how do, how do we work within the council part of that, is actually rather a long answer, which it might be better to try and deal with that as a, you know, when there's...
Right.
I thought we didn't, well, maybe that would be the way to do it, because I think we, what's, in a nutshell, I think that we've kind of, we started off with a public health department that was initially perceived externally, and I think less so within the council, as the transfer of a set of activities. We still kind of have that problem with our negotiations with the NHS that tend to see us simply as the bit that they lost previously. Whereas what we've been interested in doing is moving to be more closely integrated with decision-making and working across the council, so that all council decisions become decisions that are informed by and influence public health. That, I think, is the, the way that we're going. I think that's actually embedding very well in the, within the working that we have with offices and so on, and I, and I hope will continue to be so. The, how do we measure the, the recommendations from last year varies from one indicator to another. Some of them are very clearly identifiable as yes/no answers, others are, are we moving in the right direction? We've not produced a, a formal report on those specifically. We probably could do that, and I think that might be an interesting thing to do in future. And how could councillors be better supported? What I'd really like to do is get to you a great deal more information than we've been able to do so far, specifically on the health of your, of your constituencies, and how actions within your local areas could influence that. That ties in very much to what I've been describing about, about urban space and, and how that interacts with health. So, it'd be good to try and translate those things. I think we're getting there, but it's a slow business, and it's quite complicated, complex to do. On the health premium, why did we choose smoking? The, in the first year, we were given a menu of options that we were allowed to choose from for the local indicator by Public Health England, and there was a national default indicator, which was an increase in, trying to get this right, it was related to the, an increase in the number of health checks. We knew that we were not going to have an increase in the number of health checks, because the year before, the health checks in Newcastle had been funded at an enormously high rate, because they were subject to a sequin programme by the, in the NHS. So, there had been a huge motivation for the deliverers to drive through a large number, which was and did fall, was going to and did fall. At the time, because we were not able to adopt the preferred indicator, which would be an indicator more generically based on the wellbeing of local communities, and which would have incorporated alcohol-related activity, it seemed sensible to go for one that I had a pretty good idea was going to give, bring us the money. So, if I'm blunt about it, it's because I thought we would win on that one at that time, which we appear to have done. The one I'm still concerned about is seeing sufficient progress in recovery from opiate and non-opiate addiction at six months, which is the standard national indicator. And at the moment, I don't know what Public Health England's interpretation is going to be of that. Does that cover it?
Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too welcome the report, it's, it's excellent. Obviously, you've had to address all the issues at a very high strategic level. I really welcome the shift that you are showing in this report, and the continual shift away from primary healthcare basis and into the community. I think that is, is absolutely excellent. I just would like you to help me, if you can, about how we are going to increase community engagement. There's an incredible amount of work going on at grassroots levels, and it seems sometimes as if there's a gap between that, that's going on at grassroots, and the high strategic levels of concern, and particularly professional concerns. And in, in most of our wards now, we've got a great deal going on about eating healthily, food production, whole range of issues around health. And the one that I've been particularly involved in has been the Community Health Charter, which is now being rolled out. It's very much community-based, it is people in the community talking about what actually would make a difference to disability-free life expectancy. We've got a great deal of engagement going on with professionals, but it doesn't seem to be going up really high, and, and I know that you are keen on community health, and I would just be very grateful if you could tell us a bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the short answer is that not only am I enthusiastic, enthusiastic about it, but the whole public health team and most of our colleagues within the council are enthusiastic about it as well. One of our problems, I guess, has been that the, that the enormity of the, the agenda we've had to deal with in relation to commissioning and, and dealing with changes in the budget has meant that they, that we, we get kind of dragged over into dealing with that side of things, rather than being able to do the proactive work that you're describing. I think that the, the direction of travel that I'm trying to describe is one that will gradually move in that direction. I don't expect it to be a big bang, but we also need in doing that for our partners in, in all of this to really let go a little bit more in terms of, of funding and control. Now, I think there is a willingness to do that. I think that the proof of concept work that's going on in the city at the moment with the CCG is an attempt to move in that direction, and I think that, that we'll see more of that, but some of it is, it finds us sort of struggling against the likes of NHS England that are kind of holding stuff back that we would like to, like to move in, in that direction. And I don't really apologise for making, giving the emphasis on the NHS there, because it is the case that the NHS has the larger part of the resource that relates to the kinds of things that I think you're, you're describing. I don't think it's anywhere near an adequate answer for what you're asking, but I think it's, if you like, an answer that says, we're still with you on this, we're just trying to push it that way as quickly as we can.
Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Paul Mayor, Eugene. I think the, the narrative report is, is helpful, but I, a bit like Councillor Faulkner, I remember last year when we asked, if you remember, we asked a question about the lack of a delivery plan for your areas of responsibility, and I wondered if that was likely to come forward in the coming year. I think what I'm trying to say is it would be useful to get a more of an understanding about how the, the budgets and the, the, the staff resource under your responsibilities are being deployed, and I think it would also be useful to, to learn a little bit about performance management in terms of which interventions are working particularly well and which ones are working less well, so we can get a bit more scrutiny of, of how, of how the outputs are delivering. I think that there's always a challenge, I think, with public health budgets in terms of how you demonstrate the spend on a particular area, how, how effective is that, is that actually proving in practice? I think it would be useful to get more of an impression on that in due course as well.
To which I think probably the, the proper answer is we will, we'll bring back more detailed breakdowns of where we're going with this. We're in the process at the moment, having been through the consequences of the spending review of trying to lay out what the, what the budgets would be for the different areas of public health activity over the coming years, and profile those in such a way that we can start to give much greater clarity about what we're trying to do with the different areas. What I would suggest is that we share that once we've got a, got a, a clear outline of that plan, if that's okay.
Thank you. Councillor Doan?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much for the report, Professor Mullen. Absolutely delightful to read, so informative. A specific question, though, that I had, Eugene, on page sixteen, where you talk about developing a full city food plan, which is following on from recommendation sixteen in twenty fourteen. And I was just wondering when you think that you might be able to share some of that information, and whether that, in sharing it, you will be able to see how you think it might impact on the work of the city council and its partners, and whether or not we have sufficient powers available to us in order to ensure we're able to deliver on it? Thank you.
When, first of all, in, in, in terms of, of developing that, we've been, we've developed rather a good, a relationship with academic colleagues in the city, and we've had a secondment of a lecturer from Newcastle University in diet nutrition, who's been working with us over that time, and has produced, has done an extensive piece of scoping work, which he's just passed on to me over, for that. So, we're at the stage now of, of, of looking at what's come out of that piece of work and how we're going to take that forward. So, we'll be sharing that in the near future. The, in terms of how, of the powers that would be, actually, that's part of that process, to try and look particularly in the light of devolution, at what kinds of regulatory powers we might want to ask for in order to be able to, to take that forward, and what kinds of changes we want to make. So, it's in hand, it should be coming fairly soon, and we've had quite a lot of academic support to do it. Thank you.
We have now come to the end of the time allocated for this section in the agenda. Could I thank the professor for his questions, answers to the questions, and thank him in the normal manner. Item number eight, pay policy statement, a call on Councillor Bartlett to move the report, seconded by Councillor David Wood.
And this was discussed at Constitutional Committee on twenty-second of March, and agreed there, and I moved the report.
Councillor Wood? Thank you. Questions? Councillor Faulkner?
Lord Mayor, I just had two small points under five point four. There's a reference, this is just factual, the Deputy Leader of the Opposition is not a member of Constitutional Committee, but more importantly, underneath, about the Chief Executives appraisal panel, I kind of got the impression that this is no longer annual. It used to be annual, and I remember it being a very important part of the process, where corporate objectives were set and then leadership objectives were set. So, I just wondered if Councillor Bartlett would confirm that if it hasn't been annual, that it will be in the future? Thank you.
Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Paul Mayor. I, I wonder if Councillor Bartlett could clarify one thing for me, now or later. Table three A on page fifty-two shows pay bands for senior executives, but am I right in assuming that you not include employer pension contributions as part of the total remuneration packages? And in some lists I've seen, there doesn't seem to be any pension payment on behalf of the Chief Executive. Am I in error here, or does she not get such contributions? And if I'm right, why not?
In the absence of any more questions, can I ask Councillor Bartlett to respond?
The, just to answer David's question, yes, there is going to be an annual review of chief executives. I've just looked at Joyce, and she's confirmed that, with regards to that point. With regards to pension contributions generally, they're not shown on the salary scale, that would be in addition. With regards to the individual point relating to the Chief Executive, that will need to be answered separately in writing, and I'll ask for the officers to get that to Councillor Ashby.
Does council agree the report? Thank you. Item number nine, city council meetings cycle. Call upon Councillor Bartlett to move the report, seconded by Councillor David Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This follows on from conversations that took place broadly twelve months ago about city council cycling, cycles, and this just then confirms the, the dates...
Two or three wheels.
Yeah, two or three wheels. And this confirms the dates for the forthcoming municipal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wood? Questions? Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I know how much members find these city council meetings uplifting and inspiring. However, I'm just going to say what I said last year. I do think personally it's a matter of regret that we've dropped three city council meetings from our agenda. It is the only place where we can really... It is the only place where we can really, in full council, debate, challenge, challenge each other for that matter, but certainly hold the administration to account. There's been a small increase in the number of motions that have been timed out because agendas have got longer than in the previous year. There are fewer opportunities, obviously we've heard them tonight, from members of the public, to ask questions and present petitions, and I just think this is a matter of regret. The agendas have become more congested. Tonight, we've got three major reports, education, public health and community safety, plus two cabinet member reports. I don't feel that we're providing sufficient space and opportunity. I understand the decision of Constitutional Committee, I don't think we need to have a vote on this, but I'd just like the absolute assurance that we can keep this under review. And if our agendas become more frustrated, or we become more frustrated by congested agendas, well, the one thing we might do is ask Constitutional Committee to consider a change in the standing order and bring the guillotine, normal guillotine, in at nine instead of eight thirty, so we can get through a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I ask councillor Bartlett to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, David, for your comments. I know you made those in committee as well, although maybe not everybody in the room, including both sides of the parties, actually agree with you, but that's, you know, it's your personal view, which is fair enough. My suggestion would be that you bring that matter with weight into standing orders to the chair of Constitutional Committee in the new municipal year. I'm sure that individual will enjoy going through that particular issue once again.
Thank you, councillor. Does council agree the report? Thank you. Item number 10, Safe Newcastle Plan, I call on councillor McCarthy to move the report, seconded by councillor Powers.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. councillor Kemp isn't able to be here this evening, Lord Mayor, because of work commitments, so I'm presenting his report. So when the questions come, can I just say, if I can't answer them, we will obviously follow up in writing with accurate answers, because clearly I don't have the same level of understanding of his portfolio as he does. Lord Mayor, Newcastle continues to be a safe city, and I think that's down to the commitment and hard work and determination of the partners who work together to tackle crime and support the most vulnerable people across our city. Safe Newcastle has a duty to produce, as we all know, a three-year plan, so it is before us this evening. We review it annually, and clearly the plan's key focus is on this current financial year. It demonstrates the commitment of the city to work in partnership to tackle crime and community safety issues. It's been through the Safe Newcastle Board process with support of both statutory and non-statutory partners, as well as being discussed at Cabinet, and I think it's also been to overview and scrutiny committee. There are, Lord Mayor, increased complexity, increased challenges, new responsibilities, and increased demand to manage, when we all know services are under great challenge. In particular, and I know my colleague will raise this, the cuts to the police service across Northumbria is a huge concern to us. So Safe Newcastle does face the significant task of meeting all of those challenges, new requirements, in the context of those year-on-year cuts. And obviously, that will affect the work that can be delivered in local communities to support families, individuals. And it does, I guess, it presents us all with difficult choices about how we continue to deliver our services fairly across the city. Robust partnership work will be required to ensure that we are using the resources to the best of our ability, but having said that, Lord Mayor, we will remain entirely focused on the key issues that are before us, preventing crime, re-offending and antisocial behaviour, and making sure that we protect and support vulnerable victims. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions and answer what I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. councillor Powers, a second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's my pleasure to be able to second this report. It's a little bit like a chucked-out memory lane for me once, having this in my portfolio as a deputy cabinet member. The report itself is the updated model in which we present this information, which I think looks brilliant, not least because I was deputy cabinet member that introduced it. But it also a lot more clearly shows, and it simply shows, the objectives and the way in which we will be working to achieve those objectives in supporting our collaborative working to reduce crime in the city and make sure that we continue to be a safe city here in Newcastle. And, Lord Mayor, members will be no doubt aware of the fact that Northumbria Police has faced over a hundred million pounds' worth of unfair and disproportionate cuts in the previous coalition government, and will continue to do so under this current government. They're in much the same difficult finance position as we are as a city council, but what this plan really sets out is how we will continue our effective partnership work together to ensure that we make sure that Newcastle remains a safe city. Also, this one point that I want to pick up was just around the fact that here in Newcastle, while we've seen a national increase in crime, here in Newcastle, we've also seen an increase, but we are below the average in other core cities, and particularly interestingly, a lot more crime in those other, there was other core cities that have increased has been around crimes that have involved injury to a person, which we haven't seen as large an increase here in Newcastle. And I think that really does demonstrate how well we are effectively working together with other partners to ensure that we keep crime down. I'm also particularly pleased in the plan that we're continuing our important work on tackling so-called legal highs here in the city. Members will be aware that today the government should have brought forward legislation that would have helped us in our ongoing war against so-called legal highs by legislating against their sale in shops in our communities. Unfortunately, again, this decision's been delayed by this government, which is a huge shame, I think. And I would like formally urge governments to really get their act together and get this legislation introduced as soon as possible, because every day they're delaying this is another day that they're putting young people, particularly in this city, in harm's way of these very, very dangerous substances. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Lower?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of questions, comment on what's just been said. I also am very concerned about the Psychoactive Substances Act. It should have come in on the 6th of April, and unfortunately, we've now been told it will be July, which in Parliament means, well, they say spring, but means any time up till July. What worries me is that what they're now saying is the reason for not going ahead with this is because it's non-enforceable. If it means they're going back to the drawing board or trying to change it, it has a huge impact. I just wondered what the police were doing to try and cope with that, given the light that if we have an enforceable act that could be landed upon us. The second thing I was just wanting to ask you about is the counter-terrorism stuff. I just wondered if you actually could share the response to Louise Casey's letter earlier in the air, I asked about it, and if so, any response that you got from her as well. The other thing is, I just wondered if you had given any thought, if there's anything being done about the fact that we've got the tackling extremism, but we've also had the teaching unions this week saying that they don't approve and aren't happy with the way that it's going forward, and how that will affect things like channel in the future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Higgins?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of quick points. I do realise that councillor McCarthy is off the sub's bench, so I try not to make it too complicated. On page 73, there is a mention about the youth offending team, and I've actually been a member of the youth offending team partnership board for the last three years, and I just want to agree with the points made here about the increasingly complex cases they have to deal with and the tremendous work that goes on there. And I know that yacht teams are under a great amount of pressure in terms of their finances, both through local authorities and from partnership agencies. So really, it's just a question about the support that we can give to our youth offending teams, both through the local authority and through our partnership agencies, to make sure that they are sustained in the future because of the tremendous work they do. And the second point I just want to make is around safe neighbourhoods and our SNAPs meetings, and I do know that safe neighbourhood meetings have had different feedback in different parts of the city, and some people value them and some people don't. The ones that we have in Benwell and Scottswood are, I think, very effective meetings, they're very successful partnership meetings where we work with a number of agencies, including representatives from the local community. And so I know that at the moment, we're going through a review process with regard to those, so just to ensure that local members and local people involved in safe neighbourhood partnership meetings are fully involved in that process.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really welcome this report, and I just want to thank the team for all the support they give to us in our ward as elected members, because we do have some really serious ASB issues. And where the team has been involved with the police and us, we've been able to work in partnership to bring about change. But I just wanted to raise, it's on section two, which is safeguarding people from radicalisation. There is increasing concern across the country and internationally about the way this is being played out as a bureaucratic tool for change, and there's quite a growing feeling that it has become rather selective, so that quite a lot of communities feel that they are being targeted in terms of what it means to prevent radicalisation. In our ward, without any doubt at all, radicalisation is for young, white, disaffected men who actually feel radicalised by their experience. But the way that the whole programme is working in many places, and I've had this experience of actually going to a university and having a meeting at the university to discuss something quite benign, we weren't allowed to hold the meeting in that university because we hadn't given three weeks' notice. So the university themselves were extremely concerned about it. I know the public authorities have been told that they've got to work with the police, they've got to work with this, the government agenda, but I just would ask that we don't actually make it, we make it general across, and that certain communities, particularly Asian communities, do not feel that they are being targeted. Thank you.
Thank you. Took your concerns with the pro vice-chancellor at the university, and she's putting forward your complaint and finding out what the problem was. Thank you. councillor Ashby, please.
I think that you have misinformation, I was not intending to speak on this one.
councillor Todd?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Actually, my question follows a theme of a couple of earlier questions. Two weeks ago, I had the pleasure, I think, of becoming a trained and certified Prevent operative, an organisation involved with, whose mission in life is to develop independent critical thinking, which strangely doesn't appear among the list of British values in the Prevent strategy. That organisation, like many education organisations, has decided to commonise the programme in an appropriate way. Actually does it very well. I noticed we're embarking on a similar thing on page 86, with a reference to developing a structured training and awareness programme. I wondered if council would have sight of that programme when it's ready to go out. It might be an interesting thing that would help flesh out some of the concerns that have been raised, because there are different ways of approaching Prevent, and one of the ways, as councillor Schofield has preemptively been saying, does cause enormous concern and worry to numbers of people in the parts of the city that we represent, and actually more widely, teachers' organisations have been mentioned as well. I think they're quite rightly raised some critical comments about Prevent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I ask councillor McCarthy to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will do my best. Councillor, they asked me about NPSs and the non-enforceable nature of what might be coming back. I mean, I think we probably need to wait and see what the legislation looks like when it finally comes through. I can't really respond on behalf of the police, but I guess what we've got to do is work in partnership, and it's a kind of whole council approach, I guess, doesn't it? Because NPS affects a number of our portfolios, and indeed, a number of officers work across the council. Lord Mayor, there were a number of questions about tackling violent extremism and the Prevent agenda, and what we are doing in relation to that. I don't know the detail of our response to that, but I know we have a legal, a statutory responsibility to do all that we can. But I appreciate councillor Lower mentioned the teacher unions debating that and sharing concerns about the impact that that's having on relationships with adults and young people. I mean, I think that's what Anne is talking about too, in relationship to the young men in Elswick and across the West End. So I think the more that we can do to share what we're doing, I think that helps us to be better informed, and maybe then we can put in the appropriate support, you know, into our local communities. I think it will be fine to share the training programme with colleagues. I am assuming that members will be offered opportunities to be trained on Prevent, because we have been in the past, so I know that that will be on offer again, and it is just part of that kind of general awareness programme. councillor Higgins raised issues about the yacht and the financial pressures that the yacht are under, that is indeed true. We do have to work with our partners, but we are also mindful that we have a responsibility. And actually, if we can implement more effective early intervention so that young people don't end up in the yacht, then that obviously saves us those resources, but we've got to make sure we're supporting those young people early. And I think, Lord Mayor, the only other, I'll come back to Anita's question about counter-terrorism. On safe neighbourhoods, I hear what councillor Higgins is saying in relation to that. As we all know, the Police and Crime Commission and the Chief Constable have invested their resources into neighbourhood policing and are going to support our safe neighbourhoods work in a much more targeted way than we've done in the past. So I think we need to work with the police to make sure that where it's appropriate, we're making the right response, but it needs to be responsive to local need, rather than just, you know, that we have meet those regular meetings, and clearly that saves time and officer resource. I'm not sure about the letter from Louise Casey, Anita, so I'll have to follow that up, but I don't see why we can't share, if there has been a response, I don't see why that can't be shared. I hope that's everything, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Does council agree the report?
Agreed.
Item 10A, Education Annual Report 2015, members will have received notification of a supplemental agenda item regarding the Education Annual Report 2015. For information, paper copies have been circulated on a supplemental agenda in the chamber. I call on councillor Kingsland to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just firstly apologise for the late addition of this to the agenda? I'm not entirely certain what happened, but I was very keen that it did come here tonight because that was promised when this was sent out by email in March. This is our first stab at doing an annual report, and I hope it's welcomed by members because certainly members have asked for more information about education and attainment in Newcastle. It's certainly been well received by schools since it was sent out in March, and I would like to just start by thanking the officers for pulling together such a comprehensive document in what was a very short period of time. However, because it was a short period of time, it may be that there could be improvements to it. For example, I was keen that we would have some case studies, and what I'd be interested in is feedback from members on what additional information they might like to see in future reports. Other than that, I'd say it's a very comprehensive report. I don't intend to go through any of the detail, but I'm happy to answer questions, and I would move the report for information.
councillor Cott?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Yes, thank you very much, councillor Kingsland, for raising this, and I think it is certainly a very useful report, giving quite a lot of information about a range of things. One of the things which I think stands out, of course, is we're moving into a very new world where education is being effectively privatised, and I think both of our parties have some concerns about that, I believe, and I think councillor Kingsland probably agrees, and I'd be interested to hear whether she does, agrees with me, that we are now in a situation where the ideological undercurrents here, which are leading to competition in education. And this, of course, comes from the academisation agenda, but it also has an impact on things like school place planning, admissions, a whole range of issues. And I'd be quite interested in councillor Kingsland's view about these things, and whether she would be happy to work with the opposition group here in actually opposing some of the developments and putting forward some robust... developments and putting forward some robust perspectives to central government and lobbying central government where we can. You raised a particular point about things for inclusion. I actually think this provides quite a broad range of things that we ought to be discussing in other forms. And I think, would it be all right for me to raise the point you were going to raise? Okay. I know that councillor Lowe is going to raise an issue about whether this could be digested through scrutiny. I think there's quite a lot of detail here, and I think it would be really useful if it could be explored through that route, because I think there's quite a lot of use there. Case studies, I think, there's plenty of case studies here, I could go on, but I'm not going to. I think it's a really interesting report, and I welcome the contribution that you've provided to council by providing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Durn?
So, thank you, Lord Mayor. One of the things that particularly struck me about the report, which is very much to be welcomed, I mean, I know a number of people in this room know that I spent my thirty-three years' working life with this council in the education department, so it's something that's very close to my heart and my history. And one of the things I noticed in the director's statement in paragraph one point nine was the comment regarding achievement of children from low income and disadvantaged families. And what I was particularly pleased to see in the body of the report at seven point two was the very welcome continuation of the Newcastle bursary to provide financial help and support to those disadvantaged young people within our city, to enable them to stay on at school, continue their education, and hopefully see them through to some other form possibly of higher education or unemployment. So it's really just a comment to say that I really am pleased that we as a council have been prepared to continue to provide the Newcastle bursary, which was one of the first things that this side of the council did when it took over office in two thousand and seven. Eleven. Seven was when I became councillor.
Thanks for that information. Thank you, councillor. councillor Kingsland to respond. Sorry, we have a late-hander. We've got two. Oh. councillor Faulkner, please. Oh, you're indicating Faulkner, yes. Right, councillor Faulkner, please.
It's before beauty or something, I think it is. Okay. Thank you, Lord Mayor, eventually. Can I just say that I think this is really good, I think it's a very clear, concise document, it tells the story. What I was going to suggest was, and I don't know if Hilary agrees with me, because I haven't spoken to her, is that we've done an awful lot of work in scrutiny on education and the future and things, and I was looking at section fourteen, which is the challenges and priorities. And I really think it would be good to maybe pull together a group on scrutiny again, just to look at this and see if we can take it forward over the next twelve months or so, if we can do anything to contribute to that in any way, it would be really useful. So that's basically what I wanted to say, was that it's unfortunate that it didn't get, you know, I mean, it has been out there in the ether for a while, it didn't get on the agenda, but I do recommend everybody should have read it when they got it in March, and I think that this is something that we could take forward if Hilary's agreeable, which she is. Okay, thanks, Lord Mayor.
I think that was a case of councillor Lowe pulling rank there. councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It is a very good report, thank you councillor Kingsland. I have a question on section eight and section nine. Section eight is headed employment and skills. I wonder what you thought about the role of the private sector in supporting the educational sector in preparing for work, the transition to work? I went to a governor's briefing meeting a little while ago, I was the only governor who was there, actually, the teachers were there, but the only non-teacher governor. And there was a paper from one of the council officers encouraging schools to appoint governors as champions of employment, and helping connect with local employers and that kind of thing. We used to have something called the Education Business Partnership, which I was involved with at one time, which I thought was very good, but that's gone by the board. I just wondered if you had any view about how, you know, what's the structure, what's the process, how do we make those connections these days? And the second thing is on the learning challenge. I've heard people say to me that it was a very good piece of work, and now eighteen months ago, it was set up, there were a series of recommendations, nobody quite knows what's happening next. And one thing I read, which kind of confirms that in a way, that at least we don't understand what's happening now, was something in the newspaper from Hilary French, who's the head teacher of one of the independent schools, who said that she'd offered her services and tried to get involved with the learning challenge, and actually failed completely. Nobody in the council was talking to her or interested in what she was offering. And I think that's a matter of regret, if it's true, but it might not be the whole story, so if you could help elucidate, I'd be grateful.
councillor Kingsland, you have the right to reply.
Yes, well, thank you, just first of all, thank you for all the positive comments, and I'm really pleased that it's been well received, and hopefully it's something that we can continue. Just starting councillor Cot on the agenda around changing governments of schools, I mean, you know very well from many questions that you've asked me at the council chamber, that I personally am opposed to the academisation agenda, and I believe that my colleagues on this side are as well. And in fact, we've stated as much in the challenging landscape of schools, where we've had quite lengthy discussion about that, in terms of, we recognise the pressure we're under, and actually, although our fundamental starting point is that we're opposed to it, there's very little we can do. If somebody makes an application for a free school, we can't control that. So what we have considered is under what circumstances we may be prepared to agree, and you'll see there's a set of conditions on page thirty-nine that we'd be prepared to consider in terms of any application that comes forward. But I absolutely agree, it makes it incredibly difficult for us in planning for school places, which remains a duty of the local authority, even though we have very little control over the schools themselves. But yes, if we can work together in relation to individual applications, then that would be very helpful. In terms of Veronica's comments, and yeah, I mean, obviously, and coming on to councillor Faulkner's comments around the learning challenge, I mean, the reason for the learning challenge was to look at how we could narrow the gap in attainment between those who were most disadvantaged and others, and obviously the bursary was one aspect of that. And it has been incredibly well received and has been helpful in relation to the post- sixteen education. This is one area where I had hoped that we would be able to have some case studies, because I think it would be good to illustrate it through actual examples. And one example I was told of was of a young man who came to this country with his family as a refugee, his family had no recourse to public funds, but he was able to continue in education because he had the bursary, and he has now moved on to higher education. So I think there are some really positive examples, and I think, you know, in terms of future reports, it would be really useful to see some of that information. councillor Lowe, yes, I would welcome scrutiny to do that. I mean, some of these challenges are huge, particularly in the budgetary constraints that we have, and my particular concern is around special educational needs and the high needs budget, and the increasing numbers of children that require specialist support. So I would certainly welcome scrutiny being involved in that. councillor Faulkner, in terms of the employment and skills agenda, private businesses were involved with the work of the learning challenge, and I think it was very much welcomed, and they're very keen to be involved. We've got some really good examples in schools of business, particularly Studio West, where they're working collaboratively with companies to give children real work experiences whilst they're at school. And I think, you know, we could do more of that. Whether just having a governor as a link is the right way to do it, I would question, because we had community governors who, if they didn't have a real commitment to the school...
Could ask you to wind up councillor, please.
Sorry, sorry, but I'm trying to answer everybody's questions, though, Lord Mayor.
I appreciate it, I'm sure you do.
I don't want to miss that. But I think, and in terms of the learning challenge, I accept that that has stalled, we've had resources used in the department, as you will appreciate, but in terms of both of your questions, we're in the process now of appointing a new assistant director who will have responsibility for education, skills and training, and I would expect that that will be picked up as part of that role, and we will be able to make some progress.
Thank you, councillor. Does council agree this report?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item number eleven, questions by members. We have received four questions marked for oral reply, which, understanding order nine A, are deemed to have been put. Can I remind members that a maximum of fifteen minutes is allocated to this item in accordance with standing orders? councillor McCarthy will reply to the first question on behalf of councillor Forbes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As council knows, Newcastle City Council was at the forefront of the corporate peer review process when we undertook the first peer review in March twenty twelve. The LGA will prioritise future reviews of councils that have yet to participate in the first round, not all councils have been involved in that. Colleagues will be aware that we recently had a peer review of our Wellbeing for Life board arrangements, and we're working through the outcome of that. Lord Mayor, we will continue to work closely with the LGA, and indeed, the leader and senior officers have been involved in peer reviews elsewhere, which means it's not just others coming to look at what we're doing, but the opportunity for us to go and see what's happening elsewhere means that we're continually learning, and we'll work with the LGA to support continuous improvement across local government and indeed in the city. Thank you.
councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I apologise for councillor McCarthy for springing this one on, because I know it was not in her name originally. As councillor McCarthy will know, the peer review processes and the corporate performance assessment processes typically involve a self-assessment of performance. I wonder if councillor McCarthy would care to give a self-assessment of the council's current fitness for purpose, identify any particular areas of concern?
Thank you for that, I think. I think our assessment would be, we're doing really well, although we do recognise that there are areas for improvement.
There are provisions for two more supplementals. In that case, I will ask councillor McCarthy on behalf of councillor Forbes to reply to the second question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. councillor Hoddart asks about the best outcomes for devolving decision-making. Lord Mayor, I think our statement would be that the best outcomes for devolving decision-making are not determined by allocation of ward funding, nor about holding ward committee meetings. The council is moving with the times, moving towards what we are describing as digital inclusion, working with our communities in a meaningful and targeted way to ensure that we work in partnership, to make sure that priorities and services are responded to and considered, so that we can change the way we do things across the city. In order to support meaningful devolution of decision-making, we've got to work outside of the silos that we currently work in, and work in partnership with colleagues across other sectors, and we have many really good examples of doing that. The new governance arrangements and ways of working that we're promoting over this year will give much more effective forum for the development and funding of local projects that meet ward priorities. So the communities team will work initially with members to think through what those ward priorities would be, and clearly they would be developed in consultation with local communities, and the annual ward priority setting events, which is a real mouthful, sorry, but that those events will take place in every ward across the city, and will give us all the opportunity to share those with members of the community in our own wards. They will obviously be supported by wider digital engagement, and of course, all of that we will review over the year, but it does mean that priorities that are identified will either be supported or not by members of the community. Those events are obviously only the start of the process, and we've got to work with the, not just local people, but the organisations that exist within our own wards. The communities team, Lord Mayor, will continue to support the twenty-six wards, and that, hopefully that resident-driven partnership work will make sure that we are delivering what we need to do under the Social Value Act. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There's provision for two more supplementals. Doreen Hoddart, councillor thereof.
Thank you, Lord Member, Lord Mayor, sorry. Quite surprised by that response, to hear that digital inclusion is going to make up for meetings. I await the new policy cabinet format, which will be digitally included, so the entire city can be included in that, and nobody will have face-to-face meetings again. What I would say is, it's just about a month ago that this council agreed to devolution proposals for the North East Combined Authority, and if we're agreeing to devolution at one level, then seeing reductions at another, how can this kind of policy dissonance be justified?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think you will see, councillor Hoddart, that many of us are digitally included this evening. I can see a number of my colleagues sitting with their devices here. There is no suggestion that we move away from face-to-face meetings, actually, we need to communicate, and we can't do everything digitally. And I think, Lord Mayor, the issue that she raises about devolution to the Combined Authority, and the criticism of what we're trying to do, is down to the fact that her coalition government, followed by the Tories, have made significant cuts on us, and were unable to continue to deliver the services that she so values.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wonder if councillor McCarthy realises the significance of this downgrading at ward level? councillor Bell earlier on was remarking that Mark Loftus from Gosforth came and participated here. Well, we have large numbers of people on occasions coming and participating at ward committee levels, not just about setting priorities, but about things that they really concern them, like roads, and we've had excellent presentations by officers on things like school places, which explain to people face-to-face why their children are not potentially getting into the schools that they want them to be. And the money that we've had made available to us, we have able to ensure that there's a multiplier effect there, that that money has stimulated other spending by other people and also by community effort. And both of those things are going to be severely degraded as a result of this decision.
Lord Mayor, I don't think that was a question, but the issue is not about funding in wards, nor is about the opportunity to hold meetings. There is nobody stopping anyone across this council chamber holding meetings with residents. Indeed, that is our role in our local communities, to represent them. That's not what this is about. The agreeing priorities is about making sure that the impact of the cuts that we have had, the severe cuts and unprecedented and unfair cuts across this council are fairly shared across work which is non-statutory. This will obviously be kept under review, because we need to make sure that these priority setting meetings are effective, and that we have the weight of officers to support those priorities in local communities. There is nothing to stop councillor Ashby meeting with parents who can't get their children into a school.
councillor Stockdale?
Deputy that just made the point, that would have answered my question.
Thank you.
Not precluding elected members from holding meetings in their own ward.
I will call upon councillor Powers on behalf of councillor Kemp to reply to the third question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to put the question into a little bit of context, the campaign that councillor Hoddart is referring to is the Keep It Clean campaign, which was launched by the city council back in January... back in January 2015. The campaign targeted all aspects of littering, fly tipping, as well as dog fowling. The campaign featured the posters referred to, but also Public Relations Campaign, along with target enforcement activity, an environmental schools programme and work with community groups, including community cleanups and litter picking. The campaign had targeted known litter hotspots with tailored messaging. Our messages were specifically developed to target young people aged 16 to 24, who are known to be key perpetuated group. The latest evaluation of the campaign was carried out in September 2015. It showed that over half the residents were aware of the campaign and that this figure was significantly higher in litter hotspot areas. This represents a very high level of audience awareness of the campaign. Over one in three people said the campaign would impact positively on their behaviour. And again, this figure was significantly higher in litter hotspot areas. This again represents a very high level of impact of the campaign. The target, the message towards younger people was effective. In general terms, younger people responded that they were more likely to observe the messages on the campaign. Over 53% of those who'd responded said they would do so compared to 42% of those aged over 65 plus. The campaign appears to have a positive impact on environmental behaviours, following budget reductions, which we've seen. In 2013-14, there was a steep rise in the number of cars in Varco, but since the launch of the campaign, this has subsided and started to fall. Looking at any objective measure within the campaign, I would say that it was a success. It's a small step in the right direction, eradicating litter and fly tipping, as well as dog fowling in our streets. But we will also continue a determined and concentrated effort to continue to reduce that.
Councillor Hoddart, do you have a supplemental?
Yes, thank you. I did ask if you were pleased with the results and I'd like to know that. As a secondary question, I wanted to ask about any progress on dog chipping, because it's now legal across, and if you think we're making progress on this across the city? And do you think it's been advertised enough? And what arrangements are being made for those people on very low incomes, who maybe can't afford the price of it? And do you have any plans for DNA profiling of dogs in this regard?
Thank you. Obviously, because the council members need to respond back to that, I would imagine that we wouldn't be looking at things like DNA profiling of dog fowling, because that would be incredibly high level of cost to be able to do that. And I think would be a waste of council resources and time. But I'm speaking from my own view and my colleagues in London across the chamber, but I will ask councillor Kemp to respond to you fully on that, as well as the dog chipping aspect as well. Just in terms of whether or not I think it's been a success, I think, because I've stated quite clearly that because of the successful measures that we've seen, I think, yes, overwhelmingly it is a success. So therefore, I'd be very pleased by the impact of the campaign.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Obviously, awareness of a campaign doesn't actually mean that it's made any difference to behaviour. And I am concerned that I'm actually receiving more complaints about dog fowling than I've had in a very long time, particularly in our parks and around schools. And I just wondered if there's anything else that we could be doing to try and tackle this? Is there anything other councils have done? I mean, one example is, I gather that these posters that have eyes staring at you are supposed to be quite effective. And I wonder if we've looked at putting any of those up as part of our campaign? Because I really think it's a big issue for residents. They are concerned and we don't seem to be making any progress.
Again, I'll ask councillor Kemp to get back to you in terms of the other work that will be ongoing around this, because obviously this won't be the only action the council will be taking to try and address issues of flight and littering, as well as dog fowling. But if that's all right, I'll fully get back to you on those points.
Councillor Frank?
I received my copy of the Focus newsletter for East Gosforth this week. And the Liberal Democrat candidate for East Gosforth seems to be suggesting that we deal with dog dirt by spraying it with dayglow paint so that everybody can see it. I trust that that isn't going to be council policy.
Do you wish to respond to that, councillor?
I'm sure councillor Kemp will agree that it won't be, yeah.
I invite councillor McCarthy on behalf of councillor Forbes to reply to the fourth question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Labour leadership in the region should be given the opportunity to do more, as Nick Brown said on the recent TV interview. We know we lose out in the region when decisions are taken behind desks in Whitehall. We know we can take better decisions, improve public services and generate more and better jobs. We can secure greater democratic involvement of the citizens directly affected by those decisions and we've got evidence to back that up. I think, Lord Mayor, that's why this council, and I think it's a cross-party commitment to this, but we're such passionate supporters of radical devolution. Thank you.
Councillor Ashby, do you have a supplemental?
Thank you, councillor McCarthy, for that. At a time of Tory grant cuts and poor Labour choices about services cuts, we need more imaginative approaches implemented with vigor and urgency, as Mr Brown hinted. Opportunities are being lost to save money and provide more cost-effective services. The unthinkable must be thought. If London boroughs can combine functions right up to having a joint chief executive, then can we not do much better here? Does councillor McCarthy accept that while local people have a strong sense of place, like Gosforth or Whitney Bay, where a call centre or a depot is located and whether or not it's used by more than one council is a matter of supreme indifference to most of them? And just because such operations are managed from somewhere else, the leader's slur about abolishing the great city of Newcastle upon Tyne is political posturing to hide the fact that Labour isn't providing leadership in the region, despite controlling local councils, and he knows it.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think that was longer than the original question. And the question was, was I prepared to criticise our leader? No, I'm not.
Councillor Stockill, walk in.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm intrigued by this issue of DNA testing of dogs. Just wondered if it would involve councillor Kemp going around with poo bags and collecting the specimens?
Lord Mayor, this is about devolution. I'm not sure I'm agreeing. Responsibility to councillor Kemp.
Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. How can I try, how can I frame this as a question? Would councillor McCarthy accept either our congratulations or sympathy, whichever she thinks it is, for her having this evening to have covered just about every cabinet member who's an absentee? But particularly the leader of the council, who, in view of his very demanding new role, seems to us to now be a part-time leader of this council. So would she accept that we would support, if she wished it, a representation to the Independent Communeration Committee for a fairer share of the leadership allowances between her and the leader?
Thank you, councillor Faulkner, for that question. The leader of council is not a part-time leader. In fact, he is a full-time leader and continues to do his role. Unfortunately, some of the demands of his new role with the Local Government Association mean that Wednesdays and Thursdays are really busy days for him. We know that over the next year, it will affect, I think it affects one of our council meetings. We are hoping we can change cabinet meetings to a different night to accommodate the demands of his new role. There will be, Lord Mayor, a review of members' allowances. We agreed that last month when the report came as part of the whole budget-setting process. But I thank councillor Faulkner for his sympathy.
Thank you, councillor. We have also received two questions marked for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and also displayed in the foyer. Item 12, Cabinet Members' Updates, Public Health and Housing. And I'll call on councillor Strether to introduce this report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It gives me great pleasure in presenting my first annual report regarding my portfolio of public health and housing. As it is a first report, it is longer than I would have wished. But I wanted to set out my approach to the responsibilities which I hold and also to give members some detail about some of the activities that are happening on the ground, as well as identify some priorities for the future. I also wanted to identify some challenges. Tonight, I'm only going to highlight a few features, given that you will have read the report and that we've just had an excellent presentation from the Director of Public Health. So in order to avoid duplication, I'm going to give greater attention to the housing matters in the report. The report has been considered by health scrutiny, joined by some members of overall scrutiny, and I'm grateful for their interest, as there was a very good discussion at that meeting. And I have amended the report delivered to that committee to take into account some of the comments that were made. One of these is a suggestion that we should consider more work with communities to develop their own health priorities, as been done in Elswick. And councillor Schofield raised that question tonight in relation to the Director of Public Health report. I could not agree more, because better outcomes will depend upon empowerment and ownership. And it's not just me saying that. I was very impressed that Sir Michael Marmot, when he was in the Northeastern last year, was making the very same point. And those are the principles that inform our Wellbeing for Life strategy. What I would like to offer is to set up some meetings with members to see how we can take forward sort of devolving the development of public health initiatives across the city. But we do have to recognise that engaging communities will require facilitation and that may need resourcing. And as we know, resources are limited and reducing. But maybe we can look to some charitable funding or something like the Big Lottery. Some key points I wish to make. First, on public health, you will see that the focus of public health is on delivering better outcomes for populations. At the heart is a mission to reduce health inequalities in the city, which are economically and socially determined, which means there is no inevitability about the inequalities that exist. The challenges here in Newcastle are different from more affluent areas, and that is why attention to context is important. There are two key contextual issues that I want to draw your attention to. First is the financial challenges, of which you are well aware of. So we have to get best value for money, particularly through commissioning, develop effective partnerships and be innovative in raising more money. There are examples in this report where we are doing this across the board. The second contextual issue is the one of poverty, which is linked to opportunities, life chances, morbidity and mortality. Child poverty is slightly declining. It's just dropped below 30% in Newcastle. Although if you look at the Public Health England ward-based reports about poverty in your wards, you will see that across the city it varies. In my own ward, it's 41% of children are in poverty and in some wards it's 51%. This issue is why I work closely with other networks, like the North East Child Poverty Commission and Food Newcastle, who are working with each other and Northumbria University to address issues arising from poverty and health. They are in turn working with the council to develop a food policy, which has also been mentioned tonight, which will address food poverty, as well as issues around quality, access and sustainability. The public health team have been praised by Food Newcastle for their way of working openly and collaborative with them to help scope this policy with the succumbent we've had from the university. I think this is an example of Newcastle being a cooperative council in action, and I know it's very much appreciated. And to answer councillor Dunn's earlier question about the food policy, that the first discussions, public discussions are going to take place next week, and I think we hope by the end of the year we'll be nearer bringing a policy to the council. Returning to, returning public health to local government, not with outstanding austerity, gives us an opportunity to make a difference with a focus on prevention and embedding health in all policies. We can say that nearly everything we do has either a positive or a negative impact on health and wellbeing. We are seizing opportunities to mainstream public health in all policies and services across the council. There are indications in this report that this is beginning to happen. I've discussed this with my cabinet colleagues and I'll be returning to it again soon to see how we can do more. But it is happening and I have tried to show in my report how the public health agenda is helping the council deliver in all of its four priority areas. You will see that I'm also responsible for Age Friendly City. Building on the work of councillor Schofield has rightly urged us to do more. I am a member of the citywide partnership and regularly meet with key players. They look to the council for leadership and commitment, especially in developing innovation. One current task from them is to help us to find a site to build some model homes with innovative technology for ageing. This would be a demonstration project with a view to developing similar homes in future years. I hope that the council will be able to play a part in this innovative initiative. You will see that we have age-friendly policies, especially in housing and employment, but we can do more. So it's my intention to try and embed age-friendliness in all policies, as we are doing with public health. Forgive me if I don't say more about public health content tonight. I'm happy to discuss outside this meeting with any members at any time. In the meantime, I want to return to housing. Most important issue has been for us is house building and capital investment. We have an ambitious housing policy set out in our core strategy. Houses are more than bricks and mortar. They are homes which are built to high standards and in good environments and are affordable and in sustainable communities contribute to our health and wellbeing objectives. We are aiming to have 19,000 new homes by 2030 of mixed tenure, including affordable homes to buy and to rent, although you're all aware of the threats in the Housing and Planning Bill, which is still going through in Parliament. Page 27 of my report details performance from 2013 to date and refers to the revised plan for building on council-owned sites in September 2015. Planned are 2,475 new homes, of which 972 would be affordable. HRA and asset management has been exercising us this year. You're aware of the 1% rent deduction, which has triggered a review of YHN Asset Management Plan. This is perhaps the most difficult issue we've had to deal with this year. We've had to consider what can be delivered with less money and what can be deferred. There was a report to cabinets in January, which you can refer to, but I'm pleased to say up to 2018, where we have made commitments, we can deliver. The trade-off, of course, has been improvements on maintaining standards on existing stock and environmental work. Of course, in the future, there is greater uncertainty because the Housing and Communities Agency is cutting funding for general needs housing.
Councillor, we have a red light.
Okay, if I could just wind up then. There are more things in this report in housing. There's a lot here about specialist housing, housing for older people and prevention for homelessness, of which we can be very proud. We also detail some report about working with the private sector, with landlords and bringing empty homes back into use. There are many challenges to meet our housing aspirations, but I think most significant are the 1% rent reduction and the cuts to the capital funding for affordable housing to rent. I am planning, finally I'll say, I'm planning in May and June, four sessions for all members on housing to discuss all housing issues, so we can bring everybody up to date what is happening and to address people's concerns. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Bitcham?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I thought it might be of some interest to council if I gave a brief update on what is happening with the Housing Planning Bill, which is now reaching its final stages, on which I'm glad to say that across the chamber and the House of Lords, there's a great deal of concern and joint working with John Shipley, amongst others, because there are huge issues that will affect this city. The bill is a dreadful bill and I was greeted recently by a Conservative backbench peer who said to me that he was congratulating me on preserving my sanity about this dreadful, dreadful bill. That's a Conservative backbencher. He gives you some measure. I said in the House of Lords and I say it tonight, I'm not suggesting there should be any vote of that, whether I have preserved my sanity or not. But it's getting increasingly difficult to do so because of the pressures that will be felt in this city, one of whom range in issues. One good thing is that I think we persuaded the government to take action in strengthening provisions against rogue landlords. They have themselves now put down an amendment, following amendments which had been moved earlier, about electrical safety, which is welcome. But the rest of the bill is a complete dog's breakfast. So things like pay to stay, sale of high-value homes, and we have about 500, I think, of those in the city, the proceeds of which will go to finance right-to-buy for housing association tenants, the failure to make adequate provision to protect families from the reduction in security of tenure, because it will now be a question of offering tenants is only for two to five years. And again, we want safeguards built around that. And this is feeling, as I say, right across the chamber. So there are very real concerns about this bill and particularly about the reduction to which, about which we've just heard, in the rents that the council can charge, which of course represents a saving to the exchequer because of housing benefits, but is taking out, I think the figure is £590 million over the period, which might have been invested in the city's housing stock. So it's a very bad bill from those aspects. And on top of that, there's the planning part, which would severely limit the capacity of local authorities. part, which would severely limit the capacity of local authorities to make their own judgements about planning matters. This is supposed to be a localist government, it's a very strange kind of localism which dictates, for example, that starter homes ought to have preference in terms of building, and based on a completely absurd notion of affordability, let alone other provisions which will severely restrict the council's capacity, and any council's capacity actually planned for its own future on the basis of local information and the involvement of local people. Hopefully we'll get some changes, whether they'll survive the parliamentary process remains to be seen, but I am hopeful that we get some modification of what would otherwise be an extremely damaging bill, which will do great harm to the prospects of providing decent housing for people of this city.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Could I firstly say that I don't think councillor Strether should apologise for the length of her report, we do only get these reports once a year, and I think it's very important that you can include everything that's happening in the portfolio. I just had a few brief questions on the health issues. On page one hundred, you talked about work going on to understand the position about air pollution in Newcastle, just wondering when that work was going to be available for us to have a look at, because it's something I know a lot of members are interested in. On page one hundred and one, you mentioned the grant that was used to tackle rogue landlords, which I think had to be spent by the end of March, now it may still be too early to say what the results of that has been, but it'd be interesting to know what that's achieved. And on page one hundred and ten, you talk about smoking services, you don't actually mention e-cigarettes at all, and I just wondered what your view was of the role of e-cigarettes in reducing the harm caused by tobacco. Certainly my impression that the people most likely to be using e-cigarettes are those heavy smokers who perhaps would get the most benefit from it, so although it's not an ideal solution, I tend to think it's a lot better than tobacco, but I'd be interested in your views.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Higgins?
First of all, Lord Mayor, can I thank councillor Strether for what is a very comprehensive report, covering a whole range of issues. Just a couple of points very briefly then. On page ninety-nine, as a keen cyclist, I couldn't miss the opportunity to comment on the cycling in the city programme. I've had the opportunity of speaking to the officer involved in that, and I'm very impressed with the work done around that. I think we still have some way to go to make Newcastle a cycle-friendly city, as probably shown by events earlier this evening, and I think the problem is that the car lobby carries more votes than the cycle lobby at the moment, but I guess we'll have to work on that. And I think I saw a recent report in a newspaper that compared the expenditure by the government in this country on cycling with that in the Netherlands, and I think we spend one pound twenty-four pence a head, whereas the Netherlands spend twenty-five pounds per head. So I think probably at government level as well, we need to do a considerable amount around that. But I think the question really, or the point to councillor Strether, is about the health benefits of cycling, because obviously the health benefits, I think, are particularly important in the more disadvantaged parts of the city, and if you look at the, if you do a survey of cycling in the city, you find actually it's a little bit of a middle class, particularly amongst adults, a little bit of a middle-class occupation. So I think we've got a challenge about how we try to roll out the cycling programme and get more people involved, particularly adults from the more disadvantaged parts of the city, because of the benefits that that will bring, so it'd be interesting to hear some comments about that. The second point I wanted to make was about the funding and the initiatives around bringing empty properties back into use, and there is mention in the report about an area in my ward called HHRS, which was a very imaginative name, because it's just the initials of all the streets around that area, but it was a particularly difficult area, a challenging area, because of the mixture of tenure, and we did have an intensive programme over a short period of time around the empty homes programme, that was very effective in bringing about real improvements in that area. So it's just about expressing the appreciation of the residents for that work done, and whether we can have an evaluation of that programme, and whether that programme can be fed out into other parts of the city as well.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hurdout, who isn't here. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Jane, for a really interesting report. Just to confound expectations, I won't be asking a question about cycling. I just wanted to ask a question about housing, actually. In the public health report, it identifies the drop in healthy life expectancy, and in your report, you talk about specialist housing for those who have support needs. Can you give a bit more information on the ways that we, as a council, seek to identify and meet the housing needs of our ageing population, particularly in light of the reduction in healthy life expectancy?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Strether and Kate McLachlan for this report, and can I ask her for a little extra useful information? These subjects have already been touched upon, but on page ninety-nine, what is the quantitative increase in women and men cyclists as a result of campaigns and investment? And on page one hundred and one, the number of empty private sector homes brought back to habitable condition. One of my worries is that all the new student accommodation being built is going to drive down the maintenance of bottom-end private student houses, and the stock thereafter released to the market, which could be used by others, couldn't be.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would everybody welcome this report, and I think it's really helpful to have the Director of Public Health's report on the same night, I think it really made a lot of sense. I just wanted to talk about the food takeaways. I really welcome the public health team working closely with planning. I think a lot of people have been working on this for a number of years to get a measure for this, and I think it would be very helpful if a time limit could be set and a monitoring system put in place on whether, how effective that has been. And just finally, I just wanted to make another plea, that we engage fully with the voluntary sector and the community sector to support the initiatives that are going on at a grassroots level. There's some fantastic stuff going on around fast food outlets and how we actually regulate them, and a lot of the people in the community are very clear what has to be done, and often they're quite simple things, that maybe at a strategic level may not occur to people. So on both of those points, I would like some answers, but I think it's a fantastic report, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Very interesting report, thank you. Three quick questions. The first is, on page one, two, four, there's a really interesting chart showing how the ring-fenced public health budget was spent last year. I just wondered if councillor Strether might write to us all and tell us how it will be spent in the year that we're just entering. That's question number one. Question number two is about BME health, health of BME communities, where there are some special issues in terms of conditions and also in terms of access, and I didn't see anything about that, and I wondered if she could draw members' attention to where we might find out any piece of work on that. And the third question is on housing, and she'd be aware that, and I'm not going to refer to the procurement process, but many people on both sides were very concerned about what happened with the, what used to be called the independent tenant voice. We've just had a letter, we members of all had a letter telling us what the new arrangements would be. Could she give us some assurance as to how the service will remain independent when it is council employees who will be providing it or facilitating it? And secondly, where the expertise comes from to actually do this job, because it's not something that council staff have done before?
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Strether to reply?
Right, a lot of questions there, and I'm very gratified that so much interest in the report, that members want to follow up many of the issues that I've raised. I'll try my best to answer them tonight, and if not, I'll follow them up with some correspondence. Here's, I'd just like to comment and thank councillor Beecham for drawing attention to the state of play on the Housing Planning Bill. He's quite right to say there are huge issues and huge implications for this council and for others, and for people's, the possibility of people getting affordable housing. This bill has been described as the worst housing bill ever. I assume that it will be through Parliament sometime in late May, or maybe before that, and that we will be bringing a Cabinet report probably in the summer to actually spell out what the implications are for this authority. Councillor Taylor raised a number of points, she raised the question about air pollution. As I said in the report, that it is not my responsibility to monitor air pollution, but I'm well aware, and this is why I put it in my report, that air pollution is a public health issue, and as a result of this, we've had some discussion with Transport, and councillor Bell and myself are going to set up a joint, a joint board to start discussing what more we can do about tackling air pollution in the city. The, the rogue landlord grant was raised at scrutiny, and I think at that meeting, there was a very, I think, detailed explanation by Amanda Senior, which I think we were all absolutely fascinated by, by the detailed and intensive work that's been going on in some parts of the West End to actually tackle landlords that were not fulfilling their duties. And I think that relates to the council, the question that councillor Higgins raised about the, about that and the empty homes in work in his, in his, in his ward. There will be an evaluation of this, as the report says, the money ran out in, at the end of March. I think it has been well received, I think on the whole, there haven't been really major issues, but there's been a lot of attention to repairs. I understand there's been a high degree of tenant satisfaction, that the council has actually done a blitz on an area of intensive work with landlords. And I think we have to say that often it's about actually working with landlords, encouraging landlords to do better, that we get the best results. Councillor Taylor raised the question of e-cigarettes. I don't, I don't think it really matters what my personal opinion on this is, I think we just have to follow the evidence. I like many, I mean, they've been described both as a, an exit from smoking or a gateway to smoking, and I think the jury is still out. But I think on balance, the evidence does seem to suggest that it is helpful to some hardcore smokers who use them on a regular basis and are not then getting the worst effects of all the tar and other toxins in cigarettes. So I'm sure that that will be kept under review, and that's something the Director of Public Health will be able to report on in future. Councillor Higgins' question's on cycling. The reason I put this in the report is again, cycling is not actually my portfolio, but it's another example of the way we're trying to relate to health in all policies, and cycling clearly is an important form of exercise, we have given priority to it in our transport policies, we put the pedestrian first, followed by the cyclist, followed then by the car. It just clearly has positive outcomes for people's health. We, we've got a long way to go, and I even read myself this week that it would take us two hundred years to catch up with the Netherlands, I hope that's not the case, but we are engaging with a number of initiatives, both through the council and, I have to say, working with the voluntary sector and cycling. So for example, there are quite a lot of initiatives around women's cycling, there's the Breeze Initiative, there's This Girl Can, and at the moment, and I think it relates to the question that councillor Ashley raised, is we don't necessarily have definitive figures on the gender breakdown about the increases in cycling, but we do have figures about the take-up of cycling by wearing in, on these different, on these different programmes, and I'll be happy to provide that information to both councillor Higgins and to councillor Ashby in writing. The housing needs of the ageing population that councillor Talbot raised, this clearly is a very important issue. Demography is changing, it's an issue that exercises age-friendly Newcastle, the partnership, and that's one of the reasons why they're looking at innovation in this field. We have an older people's housing strategy, I think this is something we have to keep in review, under review, but it's not just a question of saying, ah, there's a nice handy plot of land there that belongs to the council, let's put up a few bungalows and put in some assisted living. We do need sensitive data about what the needs are in the city and where, and where they are. And I'm assuming that that data is going to be collected on an ongoing basis through the joint strategic needs assessment, as it does around data around other groups, whether they're low-income families or whether they are from BME communities. So I think in terms of the ageing population, it's something we need to give close attention to, and ideally, what we should be doing is building homes for life, whether they're in the private sector or whether they're in the public sector, and that's a great failing that we have, that people get to a certain age or a certain disability, and then they find they have to find somewhere else to live. What we do need are homes that are adaptable, that people can stay in. We are challenged, of course, by the problem of resources, although I suppose one small compensation, even though the Housing Communities Agency is cutting funding for general housing, it will be continuing funding for specialist housing and assisted living. But councillor Talbot was quite right to raise that, we do need to have very sensitive and useful data to determine what is needed. I should have drawn attention, if I had more time, in my report to the very, and I did a case study in it, you might have read it, about Treetops in Walker, which I think is a very exciting project, which is based for older people, which is based on a Dutch model, which actually builds in public health initiatives, shopping, encourages sociability, and not, not just building houses that are bricks and mortar, that they are part of a community, and I hope that we'll be able to build raw developments like that, although I also hope that we don't just ghettoise older people and that we can develop intergenerational projects, because I think an age-friendly city is not just about older people, it's about all ages across the life cycle. Councillor Ashby also asked another question about numbers of empty properties, and I've got that answer here for him. As a result, because he did, he did very kindly give me an advance notice of this question, and as a result, four hundred and seventy-six empty properties have been brought back into use. I think that's from 2013, I'm not sure about that, of which thirty-nine percent have been empty for more than two years. Assistance from the private sector team includes finding tenants, helping in selling property, general advice, enforcement action where necessary, and has provided sixty-one empty homes grants and loans to owners to bring their properties up to standard and back in use. And we have sought funding for this activity and have been very successful. Of course, we would like more, empty properties are a blight on communities, they don't actually create a good environment, which in turn actually damages people's perceptions about themselves and affects their wellbeing. So that too has a very important public health dimension. I'm on my sixth question now, and it was about food takeaways. I'm afraid I didn't quite hear...
Councillor, we're at the end of the allotted time for this...
Okay, well, I'll just answer these questions, because people have bothered to read the report and obviously want some answers, so I'll be quick. I didn't quite get councillor Schofield's first question, I couldn't hear it properly, but maybe she would, she could write to me about that or talk to me about it. I take her point about there are good local initiatives around food, and I mentioned in my introduction that we are developing a food policy for the city, and we're doing that in partnership with, with others, in particular Food Newcastle. That will be a broad-based policy, and it will draw on good practice, so there's opportunities there for people to get involved, to put forward good ideas and to identify where things are working. The, I'll take councillor Faulkner's point, I will write to him after consultation with the Director of Public Health about where we're at on the allocation of the coming year's public health budget. BME communities, I think, is something we need to give more attention to.
Councillor, could I suggest you contact those who are remaining...
Okay, I'll follow these up in writing.
Outside of this particular venue. Thanks very much. Councillor Cook?
We've accepted an emergency motion this evening, it's getting around half past eight. Given there are twenty-five minutes set aside for the next item, I'd like to propose we suspend standing orders until quarter past nine, until we can at least consider that motion.
Does councillor, councillor agree?
Agreed.
Could we finish the business with councillor Strether's report? Does the council accept the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item thirteen, appointments, there are no changes to appointments to report this month. Winding back, we have the Investment and Development Report. I will now call on councillor Bell, if he's still with us, yes he is, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I believe that you'll remember that I do tend to do my presentations slightly different. I have used PowerPoint presentations before that, I thought was quite useful. This time it's going to be a slight potted history of Newcastle to start with, with the introduction. So the history of our great town dates back almost two thousand years. The name Newcastle has been used since the Norman conquest of England. Due to its prime location on the River Tyne, the town developed greatly during the Middle Ages and was only to play a major role in the Industrial Revolution. Being granted city status in eighteen eighty-two, today the city is a major retail, commercial and cultural centre. The details are thanks to our friends at Wikipedia, which you can read at your leisure. But let's skip through the Roman, Anglo-Saxon and Norman periods, let's jump the Middle Ages, the Tudor, the Stuart, the Victorian periods, let's recognise the importance of the industrialisation for Newcastle and the North East. the industrialisation for Newcastle and the North East, with local innovation, glassmaking, locomotive manufacturing, shipbuilding, omen, steam turbines and pottery, to name but a few. We can see major expansion of the city when Newcastle was one of the boroughs reformed by the New Missionable Corporations Act of 1835. The most recent expansion in Newcastle boundaries took place under the Local Government Act 1972, on April 1st, 1974, when Newcastle became a metropolitan borough. It's an introduction, councillor Stone, Lord Mayor.
I think councillor Bell is the only person who could answer that question.
In 1963, the city gained its own university. In 1978, a new rapid transport system, the metro, was built, linking the Tyneside area. But in the 80s, trade in Newcastle Gateshead Quayside gradually declined, until both sides of the river were looking rather derelict. The council decided on a plan to redevelop the Newcastle Quayside, and this commenced in the 1990s. New offices, restaurants, bars and residential accommodation were built in the area, has changed in the space of a few years into a vibrant area. Getting to councillor Stone's point, why I've used a quick trip through a great local history to introduce my report is to show how resilient Newcastle has been over the ages and continues to be. Newcastle has changed, and it's changing still. Newcastle has always been at the heart of business, and this continues, even though the type and style of business has obviously changed over the passing years. Lord Mayor, the time is right, our plan is right, we must now embrace the opportunities that are coming our way. The face, and indeed the skyline of Newcastle, is ready to evolve yet again. Lord Mayor, I thought I would just do something different tonight. Unfortunately, some people aren't as patient as others. I hope that you did find the potted history of Newcastle interesting. I did certainly revise it, and it was good to refresh my memory. The point I'm making is that Newcastle has been here, for we know it's had a great history, it's been here for a long time, and it's been prominent in the Industrial Revolution, it's been prominent in business, and we are ready to evolve again. We need to embrace the chances that have come our way, and I'm sure that with plans that we have, we can do so for the good of the city. Lord Mayor, I'm willing to take any questions on the report.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Bell, on page 132, in the section Gosforth Transport Improvements, you say, "Work on the section from Hollywood to Broadway junctions is complete, bringing safer and smoother traffic flow." However, when you attended a recent Parklands Ward committee meeting, where over 150 people attended, they told you that they did not feel at all safe on the crossings at Broadway Junction. So when are you going to take some action to ensure that the Broadway Junction and its crossings are safe for local people? That's my first question. My second one is, I listened very carefully to your comments and your reply to parish councillor Mark Loftus, and you mentioned that consultation was still taking place regarding the proposal to close the Service Road on the Great North Road. However, I've got papers that say that the proposals were to be the subject of TROs, and that work is due to start in the late spring, early summer. So can I have some reassurance that our concerns about the proposals, that encompass the whole scheme from Broadway to Brunton Lane, and the various components that are part of that, there are residents who are unhappy about various sections of that, are going to be taken into account before the TROs are finalised? Because I think we're feeling that this has been railroaded through, and I really, really want some reassurance that that is not the case, because, as you might have gathered from tonight, our residents are really unhappy about some of the things that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Leggett?
I'll certainly continue. Take the latter point first, if I can. I think I was abundantly clear tonight in my presentation. The consultation finishes on Friday, and then all elements of the returns will be taken into account, and then we'll be able to put a plan forward where the residents will still have the right to object if they so wish. On the first question, which is that there was some residents at the time when a new scheme gets put in place. Like any scheme that comes around, there is always some concern. On this occasion, it is where zebra crossings have been placed close to the roundabout. That was the main reason for objections. This is nothing unusual in highway schemes, Lord Mayor. But yes, it did cause some concern with the residents. I think if you go to neighbouring authorities, you'd see a much busier roundabout, which is just in North Tyneside, just past the Wills Building, where the zebra crossings are identically placed on three, four of the junctions there. And it happens elsewhere around the country. What was said was that we will assess and reassess, we'll continue to do so. There appears to be no reason whatsoever to take those zebra crossings out, and indeed, then we'll have to find extra resources to do so. The local authority and the highways authority as it is, has to find safe plans to put in place, and that's what we've done, and it's improved, and it has now settled down within the area. As I said, Lord Mayor, residents don't like it when change is brought about. Ayrcon Road, for instance, I remember how many emails I was receiving, and I remember the fact that there was massive demonstration, well, large demonstration, not massive, but large demonstrations about the proposal that were being brought forward. I was glad to go with the local councillors and the councillors from around the area, just a couple of weeks ago, to the opening of Ayrcon Road, and indeed, one of the main objectors to the proposal came across and shook my hand, and he turned around and said, "I'm glad that the council stuck with this, because it's the best thing that's happened to Ayrcon Road." Sometimes we have to stand by our commitments, and sometimes we have to mean what we do and deliver what we mean.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Leggett?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I must admit, I feel slightly guilty now, because I would also like to ask a question about the Gosforth Transport Improvements, but in view of the splendid report that Jett has produced and his Admiralty History lesson about Newcastle, I do feel slightly guilty to burden him with yet another question about this. However, I must ask, I must make a comment and ask, the statement in the paragraph about Gosforth Transport Improvement, well, I don't think anybody would disagree that Gosforth Corridor is a complex transport route. I think that's one thing, there is unanimity in the chamber about that one. But when you say that work on the section from Hollywood to Broadway junctions is complete, bringing safer and smoother traffic flow, better pedestrian access and cycle routes, particularly in view of what you've just been saying about things settling down, I'd really like to know what the evidence is that already all these things have been improved. Now, I suspect that things have moved on a little since this report is produced, because the next point about the Church Road-Salters Road Junction, that has reopened partially anyway. Again, perhaps I could ask a question of whether the public perception and the evidence is really in line with each other, because there is a perception, certainly, that although the double T junction has been removed, and there is now one straightforward junction there, evidence seems to be from perceptions of residents that things are somewhat slower going across that junction. Now, I appreciate that there are temporary lights and it hasn't actually finished, but the actual junction is now open, on that basis of being a straightforward junction rather than two T junctions. So could I ask if my view on the perception of residents and the view of the evidence of what has been produced is actually matching on this one? Please, councillor Bell.
The quick answer, if you want a quick answer, Lord Mayor, would be no. But I'll go a little bit into a bit more detail than that. I'd like to put on record my thanks on behalf of the council for the workers who have actually been putting in place the Salters Road Junction. I think it's been amazing how quickly they've managed to put that junction into use and without causing major delays. I will, I will continue to say that I do appreciate the drivers' patience as well, because, as is quite rightly stated by the councillor, while the temporary traffic lights have been in place, it has caused some tailbacks. Yes, and it normally does with temporary traffic lights. We apologise for that, upfront we apologise, but you can't do major junction works without some minor inconvenience. So I do thank the drivers for being patient and wait until the final project is put in place. Why I believe that the perception has changed in the area, I'm glad to say that some of the businesses, a community organisation and other people in the area have asked to get together because of this review or assess and reassess that I've brought in, that they would like to be part of the reassessment. So now that we're talking about Salters Road Junction, and soon to be completed, the next consultation will be for Blue House Roundabout, and that leaves the heart of the High Street. And people quite rightly want to be involved in what that should finally look like. The next stage will be the lifting of the entrances, the roads coming onto the High Street. So that's going to facilitate people in wheelchairs, it's going to help people with buggies to get across there, and it's going to make it a more pedestrian-friendly area. So the changes are coming gradually to Gosforth High Street, but the perception is, because I quite wholeheartedly, the businesses were a little bit cautious about what was being proposed to start with, they now want to be involved, and community groups want to be involved. So to answer directly, the perception is, people want change.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Fascinated as we all are by traffic islands in Gosforth, maybe I'd like to move on to a topic that I'm sure is dear to councillor Faulkner's heart as well, because it gives him a chance to recycle his Mr Magic joke about me. It's about the Rugby League Magic Weekend, of course, which is coming back to Newcastle in May, at the end of May. And at a time when we're actually getting a lot of disappointing sporting news, and not just about the failure of our sports teams, but about the effect on the local economy. I think there's talk about sort of £50 or £60 million going out to the local economy if our teams are relegated from the premiership. Can I remind people that I think the estimate last year for the Magic Weekend was it brought between £6 and £8 million to the local economy, with people spending the weekend in the city? It's coming again this year. It's the wonderful game of rugby league, and if people haven't sampled it, Newcastle Thunder are playing Hunslut at three o'clock on Sunday at Kingston Park. It will bring, again, will bring tremendous financial rewards to the local economy. People go back to their hometowns and talk about what a wonderful place Newcastle is, and if we promote it as much as we can again this year, there's no reason why we can't get it again next year. So it's the question to councillor Bell, is he as enthusiastic as me about this, and will we be doing all our efforts to promote the Magic Weekend as it comes up?
Thanks for the question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If we're talking about public relations, I don't think I need much more public relations than councillor Higgins, because he always sells it very well, the competition in itself. Members, those that's been checking our emails tonight probably would have realised that they've received an email from Mr Savage, and Stephen has been leading on the Magic Weekend project, which is the 21st and 22nd. There's just been agreement today, so that tickets are going to be allocated to each ward, because when we host the event, there's an allocation of tickets awarded. So there's going to be tickets awarded to six per day, per ward, and the chairs of the ward committees will receive the tickets, the physical tickets. So amongst ourselves, please discuss the worthy causes within your own wards. Nobody's going to try to preempt what's worthy within your ward, that's up to yous. But please distribute the tickets as wisely as you possibly can. There will also be tickets allocated to looked-after children in the city and to YHN tenants, which I think, again, is a very, very worthy cause, and it's making sure that it is a full community event. I just wanted, obviously I guessed some of the things that were going to be coming up tonight, and one of them is Magic Weekend. I thought it would, as I said, May the 21st and May the 22nd. The attendances for last year broke all records. So the total, I'll not give you all the attendances, but the total was 67,788, the best ever for magic. The PR, which is between NUFC, Rugby League, the City Council and NGI, have already managed to break the seals record for last year this year at this point. So the public relations and the advertising appears to be working, and also the success. Last year, the success was measured in various different ways. One which was, on the Friday, there was 91% hotel occupancy, and on the Saturday, 99%. And I don't think for any other event there's ever been hotel occupancy like that. So we're all looking forward to the event coming. Make sure the tickets are shared out amongst your residents or community groups, and enjoy the event, and I'm sure everybody will. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Carter?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry, I do wish to return to the Gosforth Transport Improvements. Well, you know, please bear with me, because there are important issues which the local community have an interest in. The first issue is in relation to the proposals for a red route. Can you, or will you confirm that there is no plan currently to introduce a red route in Gosforth High Street? That would be the first question. The second question's in relation to the Salters Road Junction. Can you confirm that those works are complete, sorry, or will be, sorry, not that they are complete, will they be completed according to schedule, which I think is the middle of the summer? And the third point is arising from actually something that you've mentioned, mentioned that businesses are engaged and now happy to work with the council. I'm quite pleased that the council is engaging with the businesses, because there was a real problem in the council doing so. I can't tell you how many times I tried to get officers to meet with the business. Anyway, that's another matter. Can you give more information about the nature of those discussions and when those discussions are taking place, and whether ward members will be invited to take part in looking at the issues for the High Street itself? You've mentioned the importance of pedestrian access, which is actually a priority of the local councillors in the area. I wonder whether you've actually seen some of the literature that we have put out. But certainly, we've been working with the community in relation to these issues, and we'd very much like to be involved with any discussions about the future of the High Street, because we have felt a little bit shut out in the last few years.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I have seen the readings of information that's been put out over the past couple of years, and it's been very interesting, some of it, quite fictional as well, some of it as well. What I would say is that the group that I mentioned isn't a council group, it's an organisation that's been set up, Space of Gosforth, and they have invited some of the, some of the businesses in the area who have accepted, and they're going to go along. It's not up to me to offer invites to the local councillors, but I dare say that the local councillors may get in touch with said groups, and there may be an invite, if it's going to be worthwhile, to the group to invite them along. What was the middle question, please?
It was about the red route.
No, that was the first one.
Okay, the middle one was about the Salters Road Junction.
Salters Road Junction, whenever there's a time put down for contracts, we will always be endeavouring to meet that objective, that with the time and the cost. There's no problems being identified, that comes to me. But if somebody did say to one of the former speakers, give him a crystal ball, I have no crystal ball. Something could happen that may cause a delay. I'm not going to stand here and say that it will definitely 100% be finished for them, but we shall endeavour to make sure that it's, we can do the contract on time, and we can cut down on the inconvenience to the road users. Because bear in mind, it's not just traffic. What an interesting point is as well, that 42% of the households in Newcastle have not got access to a motor vehicle. Now, if we're interfering with bus times and bus schedules, that's a lot of people that are being inconvenienced, not just motorists. And then there's also the safety aspects. Whenever there's bollards are put on roadways, there's always a safety aspect, which the workforce try to control as much as they can. So it's in our favour to try to get the contract completed on time, if not before time. Red routes, red routes are part of the toolbox that can be used. Again, I have not got a crystal ball, but what I did see was, we have now got a process in place where we assess and reassess. So Region Centre to Broadway, completed. That has changed that part of the High Street or the Great North Road. The next part of the High Street, the next part of the jigsaw is Salters Road. That will change yet again. We've also been given £0.5 million from central government to bring in a smart traffic light system, because it has been noticed that we are doing more along that, within that area than other local authorities. So they want to pilot this, and Gosforth is going to be the area where we will be using the smart traffic light technology to keep traffic moving at a safe pace. the smart traffic light technology to keep traffic moving at a safe pace. That has to be reassessed. So will red routes come in? There will be a time when we will be able to see that there will be a need to apply for a red route, it's not at this moment in time. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor, councillor Stone.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Question on supplemental report, if that's okay. On page four, about halfway down, it talks about the levy to help support bus services which are not substantially sustainable, which is administered by a nexus. Now, of course, the levy has gone down this year and there is concern about the future of a number of subsidised bus routes in the city. Does councillor Bell have any more information on this in terms of what the level of reduction is expected to be and can you confirm when council will be informed about what proposals will be on this? And could he answer quite quietly because I don't want to wake councillor Irvine up while he's answering that question.
Again, the quick answer is no, I don't have that information at hand about the reduction, the amount of reduction in the levy. One thing I will say, it's important, I've just mentioned forty two percent of households within Newcastle do not have access to cars. There's one thing that we have actually said here tonight, which this identifies, is that devolution would, will bring this control along if we are able to get that. We've tried for the quality contracts, we haven't had the success there, but we know how important the bus service and specific routes are to local communities and we will do as much as what we possibly can and we will endeavour to protect them, but at the end of the day, if the subsidy isn't there to protect them, there will be the private bus contractors will make that decision, not the council.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Wright, I'm sure we're not going to get a question about Gosforth here.
No Lord Mayor, I won't, it's not Gosforth. I just want to thank everyone for the work that they've done at Cowgate. I've avoided Cowgate for the last few months, but this week I've gone there and back a few times to Newcastle via Cowgate and it's absolutely wonderful, so thank you.
Lord Mayor, very quick response, I'm going to take that applause, not personally, but on behalf of the workforce that has put that in place. They have done everything to try to keep the traffic moving, I think they've done an absolutely fantastic job. We took the views on during the consultation periods from businesses as well, we extended the period of working, we cut short the working days so we didn't inconvenience pick our traffic. I think there's a decision that we have to make, which is for major highway improvements such as Blue House Roundabout, Hadrick's Mill, do we want short sharp pain or do we want to stretch it out and keep the traffic moving? But the projects will be longer, so the inconvenience will be there for longer. But we've learnt a lot from Cowgate and I will pass on them words of congratulations to the workforce.
Thank you councillor, councillor Brighley.
Thank you Lord Mayor. My question is prompted by councillor Bell's comments about Acorn Road. I'm very disappointed that he seems to be taking the comments from one trader, who incidentally is a trader who I know and respect greatly, as being indicative of the views of all Jesmond residents on Acorn Road. It was interesting that at the public celebration that was arranged to, for the opening of Acorn Road, there were only about a dozen people there, ninety percent of whom were either Labour councillors or Labour activists. It was hardly a public celebration and I'd like to ask councillor Bell, does he recognise that there are large numbers of North Jesmond residents who think that the money spent on the Acorn Road development was very badly spent, was wasted, the whole process is badly bungled and it's produced few benefits for cyclists and pedestrians? I accept that's not all the residents in North Jesmond, but it's many of them who still feel that way. And as I say, it's very disappointing that on a very limited evidence base, the councillor seems to be thinking that everything has gone swimmingly with Acorn Road, which clearly is not the case in my view.
Was there a question there councillor Brighley?
I did pick a question over there Lord Mayor and I will be able to answer it. I mentioned crystal ball before, I haven't got a crystal ball, but apparently the councillor has got a crystal ball, because I didn't name a trader that I went in to see or that shook my hand. I actually took time out on that day to visit a number, a good deal of the shops in the area and I personally went in to meet staff, to thank them for putting up for the inconvenience during the time and to ask their views on it. And I came out of the shops, literally I thought I was going to be criticised for the amount of time that it has taken or the fact that it disrupted Christmas period or it affected trade, but I didn't. I came out one hundred percent from all the shops that I've visited and the people turned around and said, thank you, it's the best thing that's ever happened. I accept that there may be some residents that will never accept change, but that's life Lord Mayor. All I can comment on is the fact that I seen and went in personally to the different shops, not just one trader, different shops, and I had my hands shaken for doing the work in that area. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. And finally councillor King.
Thank you Lord Mayor. First, before I get on to the substantial questions, just a comment about these rugby tickets. I don't know what other colleagues felt, but last year when we got free rugby tickets to distribute in the same way, we've definitely struggled with the whole idea of transparency and not being seen to show any favouritism and evenhandedness. I just was wondering if councillor Bell could take some soundings, maybe if colleagues have found clever ways of distributing those that wouldn't cause any problems, he could share them, but I just thought I'd flag that up because we had, we had some issues with that last year. My substantial questions though are unsurprisingly on the environment, climate change and energy section. When my colleagues asked the question about who was responsible for the clean energy plan at Cabinet, it caused a little bit of consternation and leader of council sort of volunteered himself looking forward. And councillor Bell's on page one three three says he still has overview of the council's work in improving environment and addressing climate change and energy issues. I'm still sort of, I think there's still some confusion about whether the clean energy plan, which is not mentioned in this report, which may be for other reasons, isn't, doesn't seem to be coming up under councillor Bell's responsibilities and whether it would be better to have a single cabinet member fully responsible for this and driving it all forwards so we get joined up thinking. My second comment is over the page on the mayor's adapt in the blue green cities, there's a comment that the research project in the latter recently ended. Portland, Oregon's one of the blue green cities, they've done a lot of work on sustainable urban drainage in terms of on the roadside. I've mentioned two officers, I'm not sure if I've copied in cabinet members, that while we're digging up many of the curbsides to put in cycle schemes, it may be an opportunity to install small scale sustainable urban drainage. I understand it's happening in the city centre, but I'd like to see it across the city as well, so when things like Thunder Thursday happen, they would absorb an awful lot of the peak flooding. And just a comment on Acorn Road, I've always called for-
We are looking for questions councillor.
Called for cycle contraflows. The one on Acorn Road seems very sketchily laid out and I can't help thinking a solid line to distinguish between the two lanes would be much more appropriate, so I was wondering if councillor Bell could comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Thank you Lord Mayor. The last point first, which is again assess and reassess if there's issue with the cycle designation, we'll certainly take action, but that's in approved form, that's been fitted across the country, so there's no reason why it shouldn't work here. Councillor King, you know, I share your views about protection for the environment and there is a solid part of the protection of said environment within my portfolio area. I attend the Northumbrian Regional Flood and Coastal Committee, I was party to signing up of the declaration on blue green infrastructure and because of the investment and development side of my, within my portfolio, it's obviously good to get blue green in right from the start. That's the whole gist of how we can change the views of developers, how we can change the views of planners as well in many cases. But there's one bigger thing than this, which is not, it's not just within one directorate and I've been trying to get this pointed across, not just one directorate, but it's a council issue. So all directorates have to take sensible steps to protect the environment, to build on resilience and also make sure that we're doing the best for the environment. So I'm trying to roll the first two questions into, or the first two points into one, which is that I now think that protection of the environment is now embedded within the council and not just, nobody's mentioned it, but I will, because it's not really a phrase that I liked, which was the green thread, but what the green thread has done is actually tied it together and I believe that it's much stronger now and directorates are already always looking at how they can do better for the environment and how they can be more efficient. I hope that's answered the questions Lord Mayor, if there's anything else, please get on to it.
Thanks very much councillor. Item thirteen appointments has already been dealt with out of turn. Thirteen A, we now come to the point in the meeting where we will consider the emergency notice of motion as agreed earlier this evening. The motion has cross-party support. Emergency notice of motion, British Steel Industry. I will call on councillor Stockdale to move the motion, seconded by councillor Faulkner.
Thank you very much Lord Mayor. Colleagues have brought this emergency motion to council this evening because as we all know, the steel industry in Britain is in crisis and I think the opportunity to save it can be measured in days or perhaps in weeks, but certainly not in months. We know how much our region suffered with the collapse of SSI last year, entire communities were devastated by that loss and David Cameron's Conservative government did absolutely nothing. And sadly, it seems that history is repeating itself at Port Talbot and with Tartar Steel. What is happening with Tartar Steel is potentially, as we all know, terminal for the steel industry in Britain and that outcome will be devastating for our entire country. And we should be very clear, I think we all in this chamber know that the government can, if it chooses, intervene. Now, I don't want to conflate two issues and I know we've had a long evening tonight and that colleagues on both sides of the chamber will have a view on this particular point either way, but the Tory argument to renew Trident is that it'll only cost one hundred and twenty billion pounds and it'll save six thousand jobs. Well, saving the British steel industry will only cost one point five billion pounds and it will save fifteen thousand jobs and it will give manufacturing in Britain a future. And I mention that only to highlight the very sad truth that for this Conservative government, it's not a question of can we save the British steel industry, but it's a question of do we want to save the British steel industry? My position on this is clear, I would actually go, believe it or not, a step further than our Labour Shadow Chancellor's John McDonnell's position, because I would make a case for permanent renationalisation of the British steel industry. And again, I appreciate that that's not a view necessarily shared by everybody around the chamber, but it's my view nonetheless, because it's clear to me that we can't rely on markets alone to deliver prosperity for everyone and there is an alternative, it's called public ownership, this idea that you can produce things for need and not just for profit. And by the way, that's a position that isn't on the margins of popular opinion and we only need to look back to East Coast Main Line to remember how popular the idea of keeping East Loews Main Line public was with people. And you know, the steel crisis I think in Britain today points to a wider, more fundamental problem with our country. An economy that serves only the riches inherently unfair and it's morally wrong. Millions of people, as we all know in this chamber, millions of people in this country are suffering the most horrendous hardships in an economy that is broken. And if we allow the collapse of steelmaking in Britain, if we put to the wall more communities devastated by job losses, if we do those things, then what is it that we actually stand for as a country? And I think we've got to take a stand and actually I'm really proud that this council on this night is taking a stand and bringing this motion forward and I think, you know, everybody in the chamber deserves thanks for that and the fact that it's got cross-party support, I think is absolutely excellent. You know, we know that the government can intervene, we know that the government can intervene and it can save our steel industry and they've got to do that, whatever it takes, because we can't sit back and do nothing. If the steel industry collapses, then we're opening the door to the end of British manufacturing and I think we all know that that matters very much to the North East Region and very much to our city. A viable and prosperous manufacturing industry in Britain needs a viable and prosperous domestic steelmaking industry. So colleagues in closing, I look, very much look forward to your contributions, thank you again for cross-party support. I think it's great that we are speaking together in one voice on this and I hope it helps in the debate and it helps to send the government a very clear message that they absolutely must intervene to save the British steel industry. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Faulkner to second.
Thank you Lord Mayor, happy to second, not happy to have to do it in the circumstances of course. I'm not going to be drawn on whether nationalisation is the best answer because your motion, the motion says consider all options and I think that's the right thing to do. But I cut my political teeth in the late sixties and early seventies when steel was the big political football, it was nationalised, it was renationalised, denationalised, it was renationalised, but nobody doubted in that debate that we actually needed the steel industry. But now here we are, you know, the latest victim of the erosion of the country's industrial base, which, you know, to be frank, we've seen it over thirty years or more and under governments of all colours. And it's about lack of investment, it's about poor productivity, it's about poor R and D, it's about exposure to unfeasibly high energy costs, energy prices, it's about an overvalued, hugely overvalued exchange rate, all of this leading to record balance of payments problems, which is only going to get worse if we have to import steel, it just doesn't make any sense at all really. And I remember when Concert closed in nineteen eighty, what a devastation that was to the North East and how it took a generation for that town to recover, not really recovered fully. And here we have a government which is desperate not to upset the possibility of Chinese investment or ownership of our nuclear industry and another equally, if not more strategically important industry is being cast to the dogs as a result. So yes, I wouldn't rule out as an option some form of nationalisation, whether it's temporary or permanent, I don't know, but I know that Rolls Royce in seventy one, where it was restructured and then sold back, when it was viable, was a model and of course the government effectively nationalised or took over control of the banks, sold off Northern Rock, had a profit actually, should have come back to the North East, but that's another story. So this is a devastating issue for towns and communities, for workers, for all the people in the supply chain and it's not good enough for the government to say we'll do everything we possibly can, because frankly, what that means is we'll do as little as we possibly can, but we'll spin it out. So very happy from this side to support the motion.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Cook.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I may have lived fifty years on the Tyneside, but I think everybody knows I was born and brought up in Sheffield and therefore reserve the right to make a few remarks about the history of that industry and where we are today. The first reference you'll find to any Sheffield iron product is in Geoffrey Chaucer in the fourteenth century, where we read in The Reeves Tale that the miller bore a Sheffield twicklin' his hoser. And in the eighteenth century, Benjamin Huntsman devised a process of making crucible steel. Kellam Island Museum, you'll find a nineteenth century Bessemer converter and in the twentieth century, Harry Brearley devised the process of making stainless steel. And I make those remarks not because steel is history, it obviously isn't, as councillor Faulkner has said, but because in the twenty first century, it remains a vital strategic, strategic industry, not just for Sheffield, as I've said, and Port Talbot and Redcar in the North East, but for the whole of the UK. Now, we heard a lot in the news today about the blast furnace at Port Talbot. Steel's been made from scrap in Sheffield and Rotherham for over a hundred years in open hearth and electric arc furnaces, it's the electric arc furnaces that takes enormous amount of energy. We're hearing a lot about this process, but there's nothing new to it. I'm aware that the workforce in Port Talbot are concerned about the blast furnace, but it is an issue that will have to be gone into. It's not just infrastructure projects that demand steel and we learned that Nissan uses fifty percent of UK steel, only fifty percent, I ask myself, but we rely on it, it's a very basic industry for everyday products. And I'd also like to mention the Sheffield firm of Swan Morton, which makes surgical blades, made from special steel by a trust company, which is fifty percent shared with the employees and the other fifty percent is a charitable trust. Perhaps that's a management style that we need to look at more, but instead what we're seeing is the lack of many years of an industrial and manufacturing strategy, so so much for the march of the makers. Now, we know the government has declined to take the action it has power to take through the European Union and I'm going to quote from even the Daily Telegraph what they say about that. What we know is that the British government has for the last three- What we know is that the British government has for the last three years been blocking efforts by the EU to equip itself with a sort of anti-dumping weapon reused by Washington to confront China. The EU Trade Directorate has been rendered toothless by a British veto, and so much for the canard that the UK has no influence in Brussels. The British are sacrificing an entire European industry to say thank you to China for signing up to the nuclear power project at Hinkley Point and pretending it's about free trade. What they're blocking is a change to an EU regulation intended to beef up Europe's trade defence instruments, enabling it to respond much more quickly to Chinese dumping and impose much tougher penalties. The British have cobbled together a blocking minority in the council, much to the annoyance of the French, the Italians, the Spanish and the Germans. Even the Daily Telegraph says that, Lord Mayor. So much for a strategy.
Councillor, we have a red light.
Meanwhile, the Chinese are imposing a forty-six per cent tariff on quality British steel, saying it's causing damage to their domestic steel industry. You couldn't make it up, Lord Mayor. Hinkley Point's become a pact with the devil, and I'm delighted to support this motion.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I moved to Middlesbrough with an infant son in nineteen seventy-five to work for the publicly-owned British Steel. Now I'm a steel industry pensioner, a grandad. In those good old days, I helped to move Teeside Works from ancient facilities at Cargo Fleet to brand spanking new ones at Redcar. It was supposed to produce one-third of the UK's steel on a single site, it never did. Part of the fallout for the region was the closure of the whole of Hartlepool North Works and most of the South Works, except the pipe mill. Subsequently, I was part of the job creation team. We managed to help get a thousand new ones in eighteen months. One of the lessons I learned was that working in the steel industry is both hard and highly skilled, but many of those skills are not transferable. And while we could and did create jobs for their wives and children, many of those who left voluntarily or otherwise were condemned to premature economic inactivity. There's a human cost to the decline of our primary industries, as many a pit man or shipyard worker will tell you, wherever gloss is put on to takeovers and restructurings and task forces and service industries. Ask an old concert man if he'd rather have his job and the red dust back. Too many choose to ignore the consequences of their macro actions. Steel smelted abroad, exports not just jobs and wealth creation, but pollution too. Carbon dioxide emitted here or in Asia goes into the same single atmosphere, but it is from here we know the best possible control has been exercised. You make steel with iron ore and coke and limestone, not with wind power and solar energy. Imported steel, even if processed in those ever important remaining British mills, will still bear seamiles to get slabs and billets here. Marine pollution is as significant as that from road vehicles. Sadly, this motion is more about solidarity than solving the crisis now besetting what's left of the steelmaking industry. Much as we'd like to, maybe we can't stop the world changing, but we can mourn some of its passing.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Europe and the UK needs low-cost, technically advanced steel, produced to the highest quality standards. We need it for the power process, manufacturing, construction and transport industries. As an engineer, I'm frustrated that although our way of life is so dependent on these industries, they are ignored in the UK by Conservative governments and many consumers. This is why I visit local schools to raise the profile of engineering. I work in the power industry, and my company only uses European-produced steel from approved and verified vendors, produced to the stringent Euro norm standards, stamped with a CE, conformite European mark, and supplied with a pack of test certification to prove its quality credentials. This adherence to standards and processes is what keeps people in the UK and EU safe, on construction sites, in buildings, on trains, planes, bridges and roads. We know there is worldwide slowdown in infrastructure investment, as governments such as the Conservative and Libden Coalition adopt austerity, even though this diminishes growth. But people need power, transport, water and buildings, there will be more investment, and so this Conservative government must not abandon the UK's steel industry. Steel is the primary producer for the manufacturing sector, which contributes twelve per cent to the UK economy, in spite of any support from Conservative governments, a much higher contribution than financial services and with thousands more employed. And no doubt, all members this evening will wish to consider Labour's track record. I'd like you to recall the vehicle scrappage scheme introduced by Alice Darling in two thousand and nine, which helped save the car industry, safeguarding tens of thousands of jobs in the region and in the UK. The next thing to say is to be wary of the privatisation only approach. It has not worked in the power industry. The UK no longer manufactures major power station components for export. Thousands of jobs have been lost to other European countries. After a decade in the industry, I am potentially impacted by redundancy this year, and the UK does not even have cheap or secure electricity as promised. So my point is that the steel industry needs intervention now. It needs support from the Conservative government now. If the private sector is considered the only support, then all our industry is doomed. Steel really is a pivotal battle to save UK manufacturing. If Italy can save their steel, then surely the UK can also. The final thing to mention is the balance of payments. The UK has a trade deficit of around sixty billion pounds per year, about sixty billion pounds of wealth that leaves the country every year overseas gone. It's one of the worst trade balances in the world. This must be addressed, and we must produce and export more. It may take significant government investment, intervention and strategy, but our country and its economy and livelihoods must be protected. So the Conservative government must do whatever it takes to make steel production viable in the UK. I support this motion.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Bartlett.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. One of the difficulties we have is that we have a Conservative government who have lost touch with reality because of their background. Previous governments of any colour, and including the coalition, to be fair, had a range of people within Cabinet who would have picked these sorts of issues up and at least fought a corner. We now simply have Etonians who have no understanding of the real world, and that is one of the struggles that we have. We all support this motion, but I suppose my message to us all in this city is that we currently have a government who has no understanding of industrial strategy. They have great understanding of the service sector, they think all of therefore all the answers are going to be market-driven, they lose the strategic understanding, they're quite happy to have things sucked in from other countries because it's market forces. Ten years ago, when the Molyneux Centre was built in South Eton Ward, one of the issues the builders had at the time was that they needed to put orders down quickly for the steel for that building, because the Chinese were building like it was going out of fashion, like there was no tomorrow. What the Chinese have then done have increased their capacity and have now flooded the market. Our solutions have to be strategic, and my greatest feeling is that strategic industries like steel, like the power sector, need to be in public ownership, because that is the only way we can get a strategic decision in the future. I know we should look at all options, but the reality is the market and this particular thing will mean that we have no industry left, because there are a lot more people in China, they will make things cheaper. If we are not this strategic, it's gone. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. And finally councillor Powers.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Other colleagues have made their points up here.
Thank you. Call upon councillor Stockdale to respond.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. Thanks for all the contributions. You see what the idea of a strong and vibrant British steel industry can do, can bring together this council chamber in peace, love and harmony. So it's not a fight worth fighting for, so thank you very much for the contributions and please support.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The guillotine has fallen, and so we need to deal with the remaining items of business in accordance with standing order nineteen. Could I therefore ask the movers of the following motions how they want their motions dealt with? To the vote or...
Lord Mayor, we'd like the motion on the European Union to be considered tonight, so I'd like it to be put to the vote, and I'm happy to move it, it does have cross-party support.
Right. Shall I have a second there please?
Yes, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Agreed. Councillor Brighley.
I'd also like it to be put to the vote, Lord Mayor, please.
Thank you. Who's seconding this? Thank you. Is this agreed?
Agreed.
No, could we put it to the vote then? Get up your booms. Thank you. Ding dong. Did anybody hear the bell? Coursey bar do her smoking. We have feverish activity at the back of the chair. There you go. Has everybody voted? The motion has lost thirty-one seventeen. Before we close the meeting, may I remind members that the next meeting of council will be the annual meeting at two PM on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of May, two thousand and sixteen. Could I just do this, because I haven't been able to do it all year? Meeting closed.